Council meeting of June 10, 2021 to order. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. City Clerk, if you could please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Holstich.
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you. Next, we have presentations. So first, we have a surprise presentation, which is a proclamation to our Assistant City Manager, Marcus Fuller. He is leaving the city of Palm Springs to be the City Manager in Rialto, and we are incredibly grateful for all of the work that he's done for 20 years of service to the city of Palm Springs and to our residents. And we wish him the best of luck in Rialto. We know he's an incredible leader, and he's done great things in Palm Springs. So I have a proclamation from the city of Palm Springs and the entire city council to read, and then we have a slideshow on the screen and on TV showing Marcus throughout the years. So whereas Marcus Fuller was hired by the city of Palm Springs in May 1999 in the Public Works and Engineering Department as an Associate Civil Engineer, and will officially begin his new journey, June 21, 2021, as a City Manager for the city of Rialto. And whereas Marcus was promoted to Senior Civil Engineer in 2001 and continued his climb to Assistant City Engineer and Assistant Public Works Director in 2005. And whereas Marcus has shown his dedication to his career and self-improvement by acquiring Master's in Public Administration degree, as well as obtaining his license to practice land surveying in 2004. And whereas Marcus departed from the city of Palm Springs on May 31, 2012, where he continued his career as Director of Public Works and Engineering for the city of Rialto, and then he returned to the city of Palm Springs in 2014 as the Assistant City Manager. And whereas Marcus has always been our go-to guy and the one who keeps the development services and public works projects on track. Everything from major interchanges to capital improvement projects for wastewater treatment plant, to the city's annual pavement rehabilitation projects and traffic signal improvement projects, as well as countless other city, state, and federal projects. And whereas Marcus has been hugely instrumental in the success of Palm Springs International Airport, the downtown revitalization, and the construction and design of the downtown park currently underway. And whereas Marcus has been a tremendous mentor to a host of city employees who have moved up through the ranks in Palm Springs and to leadership positions in other cities, always taking the time to invest in their growth and success. And whereas Marcus will be greatly missed by all of those who have worked with him and learned from him and his many outstanding talents, which include an incredible ability to keep cool and always remain calm, a thorough attention to detail that has never failed to result in staff reports of the highest standard, and an extraordinary commitment when it comes to providing excellent public service. Marcus, we thank you for your many, many years of dedication to ensuring Palm Springs remains a welcoming, inclusive, world-class city with the highest level of services and amenities for our residents and visitors alike. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, by the power vested in us, do hereby want to thank Marcus Fuller for his years, two decades of dedication, and a job well done, wish him a happy, healthy, and exciting career, and hereby proclaim June 10, 2021, to be Marcus Lee Fuller Day. Thank you, Marcus. We'll go ahead and present your proclamation.
I do. I, you know, I have to be prepared. Yeah, I don't like the spotlight, so thank you for this. It's a pleasure. Thank you for the proclamation. You know, it's been such an opportunity to be part of an amazing team with all the different councils over the years that I've had the opportunity to work with. I was trying to think back just now, who was on council when I started? I think it was Jeanie Reller, Dana Hodgins, Jim Jones, Jim Jones, and Will Klein-Dinson, I can't remember the fifth, and Rob Parkinson was still City Manager. And it's crazy to think I've been a part of the Coachella Valley for 25 years since 1996. Was finally able to move to Palm Springs and break through the line into the city in 2005, and I've really been witness to a lot of the transformation over the years, and it's been a privilege to be a part of that team, because it's no way, it's never about one person. If you know me, you understand I like to work behind the scenes. I'm quiet and methodical, and I just like to be a part of the, you know, the team that makes things happen. And I, you know, if you know me, you also know I've always pushed myself and pushed those around me and those that I mentor to always do more, learn more, be a better person, personally and professionally. And so with that mantra, I, you know, pursued the opportunity that's been given to me in Rialto, and so it's bittersweet, because I'll be leaving the family. You know, we all work more with our family at work and see them, so it will be bittersweet for me. You will be missed, but you won't be forgotten, and I will continue to visit Palm Springs to see all the good work that's being done and will be done, and hopefully see a bunch of projects that I know our team's been working on for many, many years get delivered. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. You will be sorely missed, and you're welcome to come visit us in Palm Springs anytime. Our next presentation is a COVID-19 case update from our Emergency Management Coordinator.
Madam Mayor, Council. We're going to have this be the last COVID case update unless there's a necessity, since things are winding down. Over the past four weeks, it's been the same slow, steady progress that we've been talking about for weeks. We went from 2.8 cases per 100,000 per day down to 1.6, which is in that yellow threshold, which probably won't matter come next week anyways. So the numbers for this week look a little bit higher than the previous couple of weeks. That's just because we got thrown off with a short week last week, so there was only six days of data for last week. All of the numbers are reflecting the same trend of, you know, consistently steady numbers with a slowdown trend. For testing and vaccination, the Convention Center is going to end that contract on June 30 for both testing and vaccination for a variety of reasons. One other update that I did have is Moderna did apply for their vaccine to be used on children as well, so we'll watch that and keep everybody posted. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members? Thank you for your detailed reports. Every council meeting, you've really led us through and figured this out as we've gone through the global pandemic. We really appreciate all of your work keeping our community safe, so thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have a question or comment? Thank you for all of your work. Very much appreciate it. I might ask at the next council meeting if we could have a presentation about the Convention Center and all of the vaccinations that we gave there, as well as a thank you to the Convention Center staff who turned from doing large-scale events to helping lead a mass vaccination site. I think their work has really been incredible, along with city staff, and I would love to thank them and hear all of the totals of vaccinations that we did at the Convention Center, because I know our Convention Center is leading the way in a lot of items that the county is tracking in terms of vaccinating workers and other groups that we care about. So the next presentation is New Airline Routes from Councilmember Coors.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, we've had a bunch of these announcements over the last several months, and it's just really exciting today. We had some major announcements. Alaska Airlines has announced new non-stop service from Palm Springs to Austin, Texas, six months a year, at least to start, November to April, and it'll be five times a week. So that's the first time we'll have direct service to Austin, which is really exciting. And Southwest, which of course is new, is already adding four new routes, based on the success of the routes they've already had. We're going to have seasonal daily service to Chicago and Dallas, seasonal Saturday service to Portland, and year-round, twice-a-day service to Sacramento, which is a huge, huge improvement for anyone who works in government, to be able to get up there and back. So there'll be a round trip in the morning, and there'll be a round trip in the evening every day. And I know the mayor's family is there, so I know she's particularly excited about this one. So we now have 31 non-stop, we have non-stop flights to 31 cities. I think it was 19 or 20, just pre-COVID, 2016 to the United States, and five to Canada. And this is great, you know, and it's often talked about for tourism, to be able to bring people here and from so many places, but it's really great for our residents, to be able to fly nonstop right here in Palm Springs to 31 cities, and to have competition on routes that we've never had competition on, where we tend to be expensive, and to see those prices start to come down is really going to be great for our residents and any of us who currently have a really big travel bug. I'm sure are all very happy to see this. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you to the Greater CVP, the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism, the Palm Springs Airport. Thank you to Councilmember Coors, who leads the, who chairs the Greater CVP, CVB, for decades of work getting these flights. So thank you very much. The next, we have an announcement about the Forever Maryland unveiling, so we have a slide here. So PS Resorts would like to announce Forever Maryland is returning, so they are inviting you to the unveiling of Forever Maryland, Sunday, June 20, at 7:00 p.m., which is the corner of Museum Way and Velardo Road. So I know the community already saw Maryland arriving, and there's been significant excitement about that. Next, we have a presentation by the Riverside County Transportation Commission on the Coachella Valley-San Gorgonio Pass Rail Corridor from Sheldon Peterson, the RCTC rail manager. Hi, Sheldon, welcome. If you could mute if you're listening to the meeting, welcome. There's a few minutes delay there. So welcome. We look forward to your presentation.
Sheldon, you are live with the council, and you can unmute yourself and begin your presentation. Thank you. You're still on mute. Hello, my name is Sheldon Peterson. Let me try this again. I apologize for the delay here. See. Yeah, once again, I'm happy to be here. I apologize. What I want to do is talk to you today about the Coachella Valley-Rail-San Gorgonio Pass Quarter Rail Service. It's an exciting project that the Riverside County Transportation Commission has been working on for a number of years, and so it's great to have this opportunity to speak with the council and to share with the community. In this presentation, we'll do a quick overview, talk about the project's purpose and need, go over the project's process, the environmental documents, and talk about the rail service options that we're going to study, and a little bit on the next steps. First off, we'll go through a quick video that, we'll talk about the quarter.
Living in Southern California gives us access to the ocean, the mountains, the city, and the desert. With a growing number of entertainment options, it's no wonder the Coachella Valley is seeing a record-breaking number of visitors each year. But traveling along I-10 in either direction can be frustrating due to traffic and hours behind the wheel. Wouldn't it be great if we had a more relaxing way to travel? Southern California has the second busiest passenger rail corridor in the nation, extending north and south between San Diego and Santa Barbara. What's missing is the west-east connection between Los Angeles and the Coachella Valley. The Coachella Valley-San Gorgonio Pass Rail Corridor Service proposes to connect Southern California communities to the beautiful Coachella Valley, providing a reliable and environmentally-friendly way to access many attractions. The Riverside County Transportation Commission, Caltrans, and the Federal Railroad Administration are proposing a 144-mile passenger rail corridor to help get you out of your car and on your way to a new adventure. Let's take a peek at the future possibilities. At the western end of the rail line is picturesque Los Angeles Union Station, which boasts the largest railroad passenger terminal in the western United States with countless local and regional connections. Traveling east from Los Angeles, the first stop is revitalized downtown Fullerton. Listen to music, discover architecture, and enjoy this popular entertainment destination and cultural center. This stop also provides access to Disneyland and other amazing attractions and venues in Orange County. Our journey continues east to downtown Riverside. This bustling area offers museums, theaters, dining, and the historic Mission Inn Hotel and Spa that sponsors its annual Festival of Life. A station in the San Gorgonio Pass will provide access to the growing communities of Banning and Beaumont, a world-class resort and spa, shopping, and the famous Cabazon dinosaurs. Our next stop is Palm Springs, the vibrant and legendary getaway city with great nightlife and stunning desert scenery. The line continues east to the heart of the beautiful Coachella Valley, home to premier golf courses, dining, resorts, spas, gaming, and miles of hiking and cycling trails, including Joshua Tree National Park. Our journey finishes at the eastern end of the rail line with potential stops in Indio and Coachella near world-renowned music festivals and unique celebrations, such as the Date and Tamale Festivals. Whether you're traveling east or west, there's a new adventure waiting for you at each stop. We are approaching our next milestone of the project with the release of the draft Environmental Impact Statement/Environmental Impact Report. While service is still years away, we are laying the foundation and actively seeking funding now to make this journey a reality for the future. Visit our webpage to learn more about this innovative project. Most importantly, we want to hear from you, so please provide your feedback on our draft environmental document. We are on this journey together, so let's imagine the possibilities of the future.
Yeah, so we're excited to share with you this project. What we're looking to do is to offer this as two round trips per day between Los Angeles and the Coachella Valley, with up to six potential station stops east of Colton. The purpose and need, you guys understand it better than most, is that there's so many exciting things in Coachella Valley. There's tremendous population and employment growth. There's limited and constrained travel options. We have opportunities to serve disadvantaged communities, and an opportunity to help with climate change and improve the air quality for the region. One of the questions that comes up is whether this should be an Amtrak service or a MetroLink service. It's proposed as Amtrak, which has more comfortable, larger seats, and a lounge car, so there's longer three hours of travel time. It's better to be in an Amtrak service. There's an example of the draft schedules we have available, basically leaving both Los Angeles and Indio-Coachella Valley in the late morning, with returns in the early afternoon. So it misses a lot of the downtown LA congestion and provides a great opportunity for service to both regions. Back to Amtrak, Congress has the unique ability to operate over the freight railroads. MetroLink doesn't have that same authorization. In addition, the intercity service is typically funded by the state agencies, so it's not really funded locally, which would actually help our region. As far as the project process, we've been involved for a number of years. We're currently in the program-level environmental document and service development plan. The next steps will include taking it to conceptual engineering and a project-level environmental, which will define stations and tracks and other locations, and eventually take it to a final design and construction and operations. This will take several years to continue, but we are excited today to have a very important milestone that we're progressing through. Quickly on the service development plan, I looked at the operational feasibility and what it would take as far as ridership and cost. We also had to perform rail modeling to make sure that the trains are running on time. So to keep passengers on time at 90% and minimize freight delay, it looked like we would need additional track capacity to keep the trains on time. A quick example, it'll take a freight train from Colton to Coachella, basically two and a half hours. It should take a passenger train about an hour and a half. So to keep our riders happy, we want to make sure that there's enough track that we're not stuck behind freight trains while we're trying to make this trip. So like I mentioned, we're at the program-level environmental document, which will satisfy both the federal and state requirements. Looks at the regional service, the train operations, and all the infrastructure on a big-picture scale. We'll get to more detailed level environmental at the project level, which will be the next phase, which we're trying to secure funding for. So the studies that we're looking at as far as multiple options, first is a no-build, where the freights just continue on the tracks. Option one has two round trips with a stop in Coachella, so six stations east of Colton, and a new third triple track between Colton and Coachella. Option two is very similar, two round trips, a service to Indio without the Coachella stop and that triple track all the way to Indio. The third option scales back the additional track infrastructure and only has triple track to the mid-valley area, basically saving 12 miles of triple track and some cost savings. So our upcoming phases, we're currently in a public environmental outreach and comment period until July 6. We'll have some virtual public hearings coming up, June 22 and June 26. These will give us some feedback we need to select a preferred alternative. With that, we'll prepare the final Tier One environmental document by the end of the year, and also finalize the service development plan by November of 2021. So what we have in front of us is an opportunity for public comments, so I appreciate you hosting me today to get the word out on this document. The document is available on the website, regulations.gov, where you can actually do electronic comments there. There's an opportunity to provide comments via regular mail directly to the Federal Railroad Administration, and we will accept verbal comments during the virtual public hearings in June. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate you having me once again. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. First, I'd like to go to Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, who has represented the city on RCTC and advocated for this project and really led the way for the city on this and other transportation issues. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. And Sheldon, thank you for that excellent presentation. The Riverside County Transportation Commission has really taken the lead on this. One of the things that we're very much aware of is with the infrastructure programs that the federal government is attempting to undertake, the timing for trying to initiate a project such as this has probably never been better. So we have a long road ahead of us. This requires federal funding. There is no way that here locally we could come up with the funds that would be required to build that third rail, but we're hopeful that we can put the kind of support together. I really want to congratulate Sheldon and his team for also incorporating the San Gorgonio Pass area into this, and that has helped garner additional support for the program. This is something that our region of eastern Riverside County truly has to get behind this and make known how important a project such as this is. And anyone who has tried to go east-west on one of our freeways during Coachella or when one of the accidents occurs knows exactly why this type of service is absolutely necessary.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Woods.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I had the excellent opportunity in my professional career to plant the seed and work on this way back at its infancy, so I just would ask that our representative, Mayor Pro Tem Lisa Middleton, keep the medal to the, the medal to the pedal? That's right, and keep it going, and make it be, hopefully it can happen within our lifetime, because it would be excellent, just absolutely excellent, to have rail service between here and Los Angeles, because once you're at Union Station, you can go basically anywhere. So thank you very much for your work, as well as Sheldon's work and RCTC's work.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments?
Very last comment. If we get rail to the Coachella Valley, there's no one who has done more for this project but can no longer do anything than the late Greg Pettis, and each and every one of us remain in the debt of the kind of work that Greg did.
Thank you. I just have, it's hard to follow that, but I have one question if I can, Sheldon. So you gave proposals where the rail service might go to Palm Springs or might go to Mid Valley or Indio or Coachella, and I think it's really important for it to go to Coachella, and I'm just wondering what's needed from the City of Palm Springs and other partners in making that happen, because obviously there's a lot of, you know, commuting between our cities, and we want to make sure that everyone has access in the Coachella Valley to this and not just Palm Springs.
Yes, absolutely. So what we're looking for are comments on the environmental documents, so any comments or suggestions that emphasize the need for service to the City of Coachella would be appreciated. We see that as a vital link, both for equity and timing and opportunity for new jobs in the region, so we just see that as a huge win for the project to be able to extend it that last four miles, as well as continuing to serve Indio, which is just doing great things down there as well. So it's connecting the valley and connecting the valley to the rest of Southern California that we see is a great opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work. We appreciate your presentation.
All right, thank you, and I apologize for the slow start. Have a great night.
Thank you. So now we will take a five-minute recess, and we will go back to our offices so that we can be COVID-safe and do the rest of the meeting from Zoom.
So we will come back from our recess. Thank you for the beautiful and great presentations, everyone. The next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. So I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda, and are there any items that staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote?
Move to accept.
Thank you, there's a motion to accept the agenda, the order of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any items that any council member would like to pull for separate discussion or vote? Seeing none, staff, are there any items that you would like to pull from the agenda or add at this time?
Madam Mayor, no.
Thank you. So we will have a roll call vote on the acceptance of the agenda.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Kors.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. I think that's the record. It's been a while since we have no agendas items to pull for separate discussion. So the next item is report of closed session. If we could receive that report from the city attorney.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public at home, the City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers by telephone. City clerk, if you could please begin.
David Murphy, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. My comments relate to Agenda Item 4A, which is the city agreement with the Well in the Desert and Martha's Village and Kitchen. I am speaking on behalf of the Community Partnership on Homelessness.
And we will come back from our recess. Thank you for the beautiful and great presentation.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, let me know when to go.
You are live with the council again, and you can go ahead and insert your comments.
Okay, thank you. My comments relate to Agenda Item 4A, which is the city agreement with the Well in the Desert and Martha's Village and Kitchen, and I am speaking on behalf of the Community Partnership on Homelessness. You will hear from others from our group on this topic tonight. From what we gather, the current council does truly understand and appreciate that having a daycare model as the only available service is not alleviating the problem. In fact, it may possibly be making things worse by enabling more time on the street and degrading the surrounding areas, which may now include a prized Palm Springs asset, our airport. First, we encourage the city with the county to develop a suitably-located, professionally-managed, multidisciplinary continuum-of-air campus approach with comprehensive wraparound services. This new Paradigm Navigation Campus would offer, among other services, overnight shelter, short-term housing, and support for finding permanent housing, 12-step programs, and access to drug and alcohol treatment, intensive case management, and access to outside mental health treatment. Once this center is established, a daycare facility should only provide limited services and function primarily as a fully-integrated satellite and conduit to the new Navigation Campus. And finally, given the growing magnitude of this civic problem, it's time for the city to create its own long-term strategic plant and a position led by a single-accountable city official with a sole focus on managing homeless and social services and outcomes. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you. Jeremy Taylor, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council.
Yes, I'm calling in regarding the temporary parklets. And during the pandemic, all retail had to close and yet cover all of their overhead expenses, while restaurants were allowed to offer takeout, which may not have covered all of their expenses, but still gave them income. They were allowed to create these temporary parklets to offer extended area of outdoor dining with lack of rules and regulations from Palm Springs. At a later date, they were allowed to resume indoor dining. These parklets are now obsolete, and some of them are eyesore and take away from the beauty of Palm Springs while blocking the visibility of storefronts of their fellow retailers like ours. They are also storing propane heaters that were used in the winter months in these temporary parklets, which is a fire hazard, and this area was not to be used as storage-only dining. We've also noticed that parklets set up in front of fire hydrants, and many of them are taking away public parking spots. Our store view is completely blocked at the corner of Taco Wits and Indian Canyon, where most of the pedestrian and car traffic passes in Palm Canyon. The parklet at our adjacent business, Ty Smile, completely is walled in by fabric stage, which blocks the visibility of my storefront and Mitchell's. These parklets are already going unused due to the summer heat. It's time for them to go away so the rest of us have our storefronts visible, especially during these summer months when tourism is at a lower levels. If Palm Springs would like to have permanent parklets in the future, we support this only with regulation implemented. We strongly feel that these should only be allowed on private property, not in public way. Thank you, council, for your time and consideration.
Matt Robinson, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm speaking tonight on parklets and sidewalk cafe seating. I think we've all seen that with lines and businesses and people waiting at restaurants, sidewalk seating completely obstructs ADA requirements. That should be the first thing that's looked at to go. Restaurants that are blocking traffic, there's no point for that any longer. It would be nice if traffic lanes are restored, parklets are down to a single lane of traffic, while you look at a solution. I observe parklets on a regular basis, and one night a week, there's a demand for them. The rest of the week, they sit there like shanty shack on our main street. I really think the need is gone. I think the public deserves to know, when restaurants reopen at 100%, how much additional seating is each restaurant getting by free public land? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. David Toner, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hello, council. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you. I am speaking in regard to Item 4A on the agenda, the review of terms for operations with Well in the Desert and Martha's Village. I really appreciate the effort that you all have made in this latest round to advance the agreement and to really put more refinement and guardrails around the agreement. That said, there are a few areas within the staff report memo that require greater clarification and detail. First off, the oversight and management, how will First off, the oversight and management, how will the city, the well, and Martha's ensure that the secondary impact to the neighborhoods, the community, and the police are reduced? Who will monitor and enforce these conditions and how will they be measured? Second, patron access and operations. Martha's is providing services at the highest priority, but they appear to be a secondary offering, limited in their presence and access to patrons. Why not flip the operational structure and make Martha's the primary provider with the well services offered and support? Third, financial transparency. There is comprehensive detail on Martha's Village operating budget and funding sources, but there is no detail provided in the staff report on the well's financials. Will the well budget be made available and how much is the city contributing to fund the well operations? Similar to David Murphy earlier, I'm a Palm Springs resident and member of the Community Partnership on Homelessness. We are a group of caring concerned Palm Springs residents advocating for lasting and holistic solutions to reduce the number of unsheltered people in the community and we appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Virginia Go Karas, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Virginia Joe Karas. I moved to Palm Springs last July from Kansas City, Missouri, and I love my new city. I also am active in the Community Partnership on Homelessness. Our group was formed a few months ago when like-minded residents came together online to address concerns that Palm Springs can and should do more to address the growing civic and humanitarian problems associated with homelessness and the underlying causes of addiction and mental illness. Many of our members, as you've heard this evening, have already engaged in good dialogue with city council members and other city officials. I have read the proposed agreement and I have discussed it with my fellow members. My question is why Martha's Village is not listed as the prime operator with well in the desert as a subcontractor or in a supporting role? I think that those roles should be inverted. In educating myself on these issues, I think Martha's Village has the professional operating credentials and the track record to be the primary operator. Their services are key to helping people get off the streets and into programs such as housing and treatment. In talking about what I hope is a temporary relocation of the day center facility, I think this proposed agreement is a perfect opportunity to make these important adjustments that will lead to better outcomes and fewer secondary impacts on the surrounding area. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Bonnie Reese, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My, my agenda is about the parklets and I'm, I'm saying that if you're going to allow those, which I read in the newspaper today, you're gonna have to put some strict limits on the permits. These parklets need to be straight out in front of the restaurants, not encroaching the establishments next to it. I have not seen any code compliance come by and Lord only knows, they were on me about a sticker for my little A-frame sign three, four times before I got around to taking care of it. But the restaurant next to me has not gone towards the street, they've gone in front of my store, this store next to me, and this store next to me, so they've gone sideways. They have more tables than they've ever had even previous to COVID and it's, it's not fair, they're putting up umbrellas, blocking our storefronts, and I can't believe that you've allowed this to go on and on and on. So now that we're opening up, you really have to limit and get strict on these parklets. They should not be allowed to take cloth to hamper anyone's view of any stores or umbrellas and definitely just going straight out in front of them. My neighbor doesn't even use his parklet because he's in front of us and as I said, both other stores, none of us are happy with this situation and I really do think you have to consider what's going on before you take any action for them. Thank you.
Jerry Keller, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you very much, yeah. Yeah, this is Jerry Keller from Lula, California Bistro. Appreciate being able to talk. We feel that the parklets have been a real boon for the city and for us, of course. It certainly makes walking through the city a lot better and for the future of the city, the more of a walking city we become, the better off we're gonna be. So we'd like to keep the parklets we have and do what we can to make them even nicer than they are now. We've invested a large amount of money in making them and we feel that Arenas being closed as it is now makes it a safer corner, makes it a more walkable city, especially down Palm Canyon, and that was always a dangerous corner turning in from South Palm Canyon into Arenas. And since Indian Canyon is now two ways, there's a way to get downtown and easily get to Arenas and there's even less parking on Arenas, so the only benefit to opening it would be more cars driving by and the more people that walk by, the better off the shop owners will be over there. So thank you very much for being able to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment and we were able to reach everyone that was registered, thank you.
Thank you city clerk. The next item is city council and city manager comments and reports. Do any city council members have reports at this time? Councilmember Kors?
Thank you Mayor, just very briefly, Mayor and I had our monthly business retention economic development task force on Tuesday and we discussed issues relating to A-frame signs and outdoor merchandise for retail stores and really just listened and got some input, which staff has and they'll bring something forward for getting input from council and some direction moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, other council member comments? Seeing none, city manager, do you have any comments or reports?
Thank you very much Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and council, I just want to remind you and members of the community of some fun and exciting events right around the corner. The first of those is just early next week, on Tuesday, June 15th, we will be having a mini Village Fest, so this corresponds, of course, with the lifting of restrictions. So while we still encourage people to practice safe health kinds of things, it's long overdue that we have something like a mini Village Fest to celebrate. So between 5:00 and 8:00 PM downtown Palm Springs on Takwitz Canyon Way between Palm Canyon and Indian Canyon, we will have the first of the Village Fest and then just a few days later, or two weeks later, on July 1st, we will really kick off Village Fest proper with the official opening. So that will be between 7:00 and 10:00 PM on Palm Canyon Drive from Amado Road to Takwitz Canyon Way. And then just a couple of days after that, we celebrate 4th of July, which is going to be spread out this year in a few locations. So the headline act there will be a laser show and some great rock band music at Ruth Hardy Park later in the day, starting at 4:00, but we'll have some other activities starting before that, including Victoria Park between 11:00 and 1:00 with music, water games, some free hot dogs. I understand for the first, I think, 150 who arrive, so please get there early for one of those. And then also we'll have events taking place at Sunrise Park with a festival and movie later in the afternoon and then a 4th of July family pool party from 3:00 to 9:00 PM at the Swim Center. So hope to see lots of neighbors and community folks out at those fun events. That's all.
Thank you and thank you to city staff for putting all of that together, it's an incredible amount of progress in a short amount of time. I know our community is very much looking forward to that July 4th celebration and thank you to city staff for having the idea to celebrate the reopening along with the state. Thank you to our residents and businesses and everyone for what we've gone through in the past year and a half, all of the sacrifices we've made, we've come a long way, it's been a really difficult year and we're looking forward to celebrating with the community. So thank you. Instead of, normally I report on meetings that I attended, but I got a request to honor one of our residents tonight in my comments, so I'm going to do that instead. So I want to congratulate Lola's Cuisinea on becoming the first micro enterprise home kitchen operation, a Miko, in Palm Springs. So Lola's Cuisinea means grandmother's kitchen in Tagalog, it's a Filipino eatery by Chef Michelle Castillo, a local artist, activist, and second-generation Palm Springs resident who grew up in the veterans' tract neighborhood and I'm privileged to know her personally and I've seen her work in the community. She's dedicated Lola's Cuisinea to her family, particularly her grandmother, as well as the immigrant experience and she serves fresh homemade Filipino food with plant-based options from her permitted home restaurant in the Genoatri neighborhood. A micro enterprise home kitchen, our small-scale food businesses operated out of a private residence. Riverside County was actually the first county to begin permitting Miko's after Assembly Bill 626 was signed into law by Governor Brown in January 2019. Miko's are inspected and regulated just like any other food facility, the residents can safely and legally share home-cooked meals with their neighbors. This is an excellent opportunity for residents to begin their journey in food business ownership without being held back by traditionally high barriers of entry into the culinary industry. The majority of permitted home chefs in Riverside County have been women, immigrants, and people of color. Not only will this program make our local food economy more diverse and inclusive, it also brings opportunities for community building and intercultural education. So Miko's also provide much-needed opportunity to empower households negatively affected by the job loss and economic slowdown caused by the pandemic and this is a pathway to getting on their feet and also starting successful businesses. So we wish Chef Michelle the very best of luck with her Miko, we commend her for blazing the trail as the first and blazing a trail for all home chefs in Palm Springs. And those beautiful words were submitted by Lauren Wolfher, another Palm Springs resident and leader. So thank you to Michelle and Lauren for all of your work, so excited to try your food, I heard that we can sign up every week to get it, so thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, so I will entertain a motion to accept the entire consent calendar with no items removed for separate discussion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
If you have a motion in a second, can we have a roll call vote please?
Councilmember Kors?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstage?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item two A, a public hearing to consider a resolution of necessity for the acquisition by eminent domain of fee and temporary construction easement interest in portions of real property located in Cathedral City for the Ramon Road and Bridge widening project. Can we have a staff report please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Joel Montalvo, Engineering Department. I'm going to give a brief presentation on the project and the parcels involved in the resolution of necessity hearing and then we'll turn it over to the city attorney to describe the resolution of necessity and the process that we're having and why we're having the hearing today. So the Ramon Road Street and Bridge widening project will impact the north side of Ramon Road. Can I have the, can I get the PowerPoint slide up please? Can we have the PowerPoint please? Sorry, we're trying to get the PowerPoint, just a few slides that will show the actual Thank you. So the Ramon Road Street and Bridge widening project will impact the north side of Ramon Road by adding a third westbound traffic lane, so that Ramon Road is going to be built out to its ultimate link configuration of six travelings extending from San Luis Rey Drive to Landau Boulevard, including the widening of the existing bridge over the Whitewater River. The total cost of the bridge project is currently estimated at $45 million. In order to widen the street, the project requires that the existing curb, gutter, and sidewalk on Ramon Road be moved north beyond its current location. In order to perform the construction, the project requires the acquisition of additional right-of-way and the use of an area outside the construction zone as a temporary construction easement. Our right-of-way team has been negotiating the acquisition of additional right-of-way and temporary construction easements of 23 distinct properties that involve 19 different owners. Our team has successfully negotiated 21 of the required acquisitions with 18 of the owners. In order for the project to move forward and finalize the right-of-way phase of this project, we must acquire the last two remaining parcels. Caltrans will not allow the project to move forward into construction until the right-of-way phase is complete. Right-of-way team has been in contact with at least one of the owners of the parcels in question since early 2017. Our agent over the years has made multiple attempts to negotiate with the property owners without success. In the last two years, city staff has also made several attempts to purchase, negotiate the purchase, but were also unsuccessful. One of the properties is currently vacant land. On the screen, you can see that there currently exists sidewalk, curb, and gutter. The curb and gutter and sidewalk will need to be north, moved north to accommodate the widening of the street. The project requires five additional right-of-way, I'm sorry, the project requires five feet of additional right-of-way that will align the right-of-way to the two adjacent parcels. The total square footage required for the acquisition is 365 square feet, which is approximately 4.4% of the land. 95.6% of the property will remain available for development. It's important to note that if the property is developed in the future with or without the bridge widening project, the dedication of the additional five feet of right-of-way will be a condition of development and the owner or developer will have to grant the right-of-way without compensation. The other property in question is not vacant land and is where the Villa Bakery Building is located. At this location, the right-of-way is required on both Crossley Road and Ramon Road. The project requires that the curb, gutter, and sidewalk move north on Ramon Road. As a result of the curb and gutter moving north, the existing curb return has to be reconfigured, requiring the additional right-of-way. On Crossley Road, a new traffic signal pole is required and there is no right-of-way to install the signal pole, so additional right-of-way is also required. The image on the left on your screen shows the existing condition at the intersection of Ramon Road and Crossley. The image on the right is an artist's rendering of the replacement of the rock wall showing how the wall could look and it also shows a new pole required on Crossley Road. The construction area is very tight and the contractor requires an additional five-foot of construction easement, a five-foot construction easement to have room to install the new improvements. It is important to note that the work will remain outside the patio area and the contractor will be required to work in such a manner that is the least disrupted to the property owners. That concludes my presentation and I'll turn it over to the city attorney's office to fill us in on the right, the rotten process.
Yes Mayor and members of the city council, on Zoom tonight with us is my colleague Holland Stewart, who is one of the city attorney office's eminent domain experts, so I will turn it over to him and ask the IT staff to allow him into the room.
Thanks Jeff, good evening, can everybody hear me? Okay, great. So as Joel touched on a little bit, this is the hearing on a proposed resolution of necessity where the acquisition by eminent domain of property will be considered by the council tonight. The council will consider whether it can then both be and temporary construction easements in two parcels in Cathedral City or the Ramon Road and Bridge widening project. The council will need to consider four things. The council will need to consider four things as part of its resolution. They will need to consider, first, whether the public interest and necessity require the proposed project. Second, whether the proposed project is planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. Third, the council must consider whether the real property described in the resolution is necessary for the proposed project. And fourth, whether the required offers to purchase the property were made to the property owners. This resolution requires the vote of at least two-thirds of the council as a whole. So, in other words, four out of five votes are needed. And lastly, as a general matter, the council will not consider or discuss the city's valuation determination for the proposed acquisition. Any just compensation to be paid to the property owners will be dealt with at a later date. And of course, if it is adopted, the resolution will not foreclose any future discussions between the parties regarding valuation. So, valuation will be discussed later. Today is just to consider whether to condemn the property. That's all I have. Thank you very much. I'll be around if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there anything further for a staff report? Seeing nothing, are there any questions from council members or city staff before we open the public hearing? Mayor Proton Middleton and then Councilmember Garner.
A question for staff. We're expanding this five feet to the north. Was there an option or an opportunity to go to the south in order to be able to create an equal amount of space?
The design requires that the widening occur at this location. The design team has looked at every available option to avoid having to encroach onto the properties to the north, but the design is such that it does require the take of these properties. But we have evaluated every possible scenarios that could eliminate the need for taking the right-of-way to the north, but we were unable to do so.
Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. I understand you, we're not talking about valuation, but since one of the things that we have to decide is whether or not there was compensation attempts made, can you talk a little bit about that process and what happened there?
Right. So, part of eminent domain code and procedure is that an offer for purchase is made to the property owners, and part of that is an appraisal done by the city. So, the city issues a notice of decision to appraise, gets an appraisal, and based on that appraisal makes an offer to purchase the property to the property owners. So, that appraisal and offer has been made to the property owners.
And that, sorry, and so the, you have the appraisal amount, and then the city offers either the appraisal amount or more?
Yes.
Okay. And so then that was done?
Yes.
All right. And then, in terms of the impact to the business, I understand that it's supposed to be minimal, but can you talk a little bit about what exactly that will entail? You know, just more details so that we can understand and a timeline?
So, if I can have the, yeah, Joel. I can answer that question. I can, if I can go back to the PowerPoint slide, the image will kind of give you a good visual of the impacts. Thank you. So, the, if you're looking at the existing condition, there's a rock wall around the perimeter of the property of both Crossley and Ramon Road, and the business is on the back, the parking lot is on the back of the business. During construction, there, the contractor is going to be working within this area. They will, they will essentially move the curb, gutter, sidewalk to the north on Ramon Road and will also make adjustments to the retaining wall along the, along Crossley Road. During construction, obviously, the impacts will be noise. The area is going to be protected from the pedestrians so that they're not getting into the construction area, but the contractor will be required to have access to the business at all times. There will be construction right adjacent to the patio, so we may have to work with the property owner to ensure that the, there's enough construction fencing and protection from the customers of the business. So, to the extent that customers drive into the parking lot, access the property, that will remain always available to the property owners and to the restaurant.
And do you have a sense of how long it will take?
I do not, I wouldn't be able to give you an accurate estimate right now of a timeline for construction in that area.
But I mean, just that, I guess I'm more interested in just this particular piece
of the project. Are we looking at them being impacted for two months, a week?
I would say, if I were to be honest, during the construction phase, it would probably be a full month, months to two months when they're actually working, demoing, widening, reconstructing. So, I would say anywhere between one to three months would be potential impacts for the property. But it's also, it's really a guess, and it becomes really a factor of the contractor and their ability to expedite the work. And there's other things we can do to enforce certain things of the contractor, to have them expedite the work or concentrate and make sure that the business is disrupted the least amount as possible.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. The property owner will have up to five minutes to provide their testimony, and the public is welcome to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. So, the property owner, welcome. I see you're here in our Zoom room. You'll have five minutes in total to present your case, and you can go ahead and begin.
Great, so I'll begin. My name is Louisa Avila. I'm one of the, I'm part owner of Villa Bakery. I'm here to speak against this Item 2A. To begin with, I just want to highlight that the proposal we received in no way demonstrates that the city of Palm Springs has acted in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. The proposal sent to my family should be redrafted. The proposal we received is completely out of date. It's based on an appraisal of our land that was completed in 2017. I find it very convenient that nobody wants to discuss the valuations at this moment and that it's a guess that it's going to take maybe one to three months, when the proposal that we received clearly states that it will be a five-year taking, temporary taking of our land for this construction easement. Everyone on this call, anyone that lives in the desert, knows full well that the pandemic has caused a sharp increase in property value. This is a seller's market. If the resolution is passed based on a property valuation from 2017, make no mistake that this council is complicit in discriminatory practices. A quick Google search will show you current market trends, which states that the average price per square foot in Cathedral City is $247, as listed by Redfin Sales Data. The proposal we received lists our property valuation at $16 and $19 per square foot. There is currently a parcel just up the road from us at the corner of El Placeta and Ramon that is only 426 square feet larger than our property on Sarah Street. That parcel is currently listed on the market for $240,000 by the seller. The proposal we received lists our property valuation at $132,000. There's a $107,000 difference here. Even if our parcels are zoned differently, the one listed on El Placeta is clear, it's extremely clear that the proposal presented to us is weak and does not reflect the current market. The law states that when property is taken under eminent domain, the measure of just compensation is the fair market value of the property to be asked for taking as of the date of the taking, the date of the taking, not 2017, when this project maybe began. It is determined by assessing a price a willing buyer and a willing seller would agree to. We do not agree to these prices, and no landowner in the desert would either. In addition to the out-of-date and extremely deflated property valuation that was proposed to us, I want to bring to light the fact that Palm Springs has not done its due diligence to ensure the least amount of private injury in this project. I would like to know how five years of construction easement in front of an operating business is the best strategy to ensure the least amount of private injury when there are several parcels of land in the immediate vicinity of our operating business that are vacant? Why not look to these areas to store your construction equipment and materials? Diagonally across the street is treble land that is currently not in use. There's another parcel of land off of Sarah Street and Crossley that is not in use. Our small business just went through an extremely challenging year due to the pandemic. The project would directly affect our patio operations, and after last year, the value of our patio was immeasurable. It was 100% our lifeline during the pandemic. The project will be bringing dust, noise, and affect the overall use of our patio for five years. No one on this council can guarantee that there will not be a resurgence of operating restrictions on the restaurant industry if another strain of COVID emerges. We do not want our land to be utilized for storage of your materials and equipment. We don't recognize that $62 a month as listed in your proposal is the fair market value for the temporary taking of over 400 square feet of our land for your construction easement. It seems to me that Palm Springs wants to save a buck and punt their storage costs onto us, a small business. I really want to highlight the fact that across the street are large franchise businesses such as Bank of America and Walmart. I don't need a law degree to know that Palm Springs Legal Council would never advise them to a branch Bank of America or Walmart with the proposal that was sent to my family's home. We want a fair and updated offer on the table. We know our rights and plan to exercise them. We know the laws of eminent domain state that we should receive a fair market value for the taking of our land, a fair market value for the temporary taking of our land, that we can charge severance damages for the impact on the remainder of our parcels from this taking, and most importantly, for the impact on our business that this project will cause. We urge this council to take a step back from the resolution of necessity and approach this project in a fair and ethical manner. We await a new proposal from the city of Palm Springs with 2021 valuations so that the baseline figures of our negotiations reflect the year that we are living in. My sister Rosario can now expand on the manner in which the communications have occurred.
You're muted, sorry, if you want to start again, thank you.
Hi, my name is Rosario Avila. I am civically engaged in this community. Jeff, Kristi, Lisa, I all know you from Desert Community Energy, a joint powers authority where I am civically active, so much so that I actually lobbied my city council to get Cathedral City out of DCE because I recognize that while it might be good for the city of Palm Springs, it might not be good for the residents of Cathedral City. We've been here for 33 years. I like to think that we know a little bit about this community. The reason why I'm a little bit confused, and I'm going to ask you today, what is your role exactly here? Are you my public servant? Is Cathedral City Council my public servant? Between the 10 of you, whose responsibility, whose job is it to see the communications that we've had with your Palm Springs staff? To be honest, they haven't been the best. Joel, Marcus, I've actually hit a wall with Marcus last December, and I promised myself not to communicate by phone. I think the proper manner to communicate would be through email so we have documentation to prove to people, to show how we are being treated. When I first found out about this project, just like the CB link that's only a few feet away from our business, I naturally started to inquire, what's going on? Are we going to throw this sewer over? Just so you know, city council, you would be opening a 16-year-old wound where the previous generation of my parents, they fought and won against the city of Cathedral City battling the eminent domain, proposed eminent domain. They wanted to take the whole area. We won. So, for you to be opening a resolution to begin eminent domain, you would be opening a 16-year-old wound. We're not against the taking of our property if absolutely necessary in the public good. We are against taking of our property if we're not justly compensated as it violates our Fifth Amendment right. So, today, in terms of what Joel said and how long construction is, I've seen your meetings. I've seen you do business, and just like the last few months, how you took a step back, went back to the drawing board with labor when you guys were talking community workforce agreement, I would actually ask, since we are part of another jurisdiction, we are Cathedral City, what is, what can we do to create a project labor agreement so that we're comfortable, we have it in writing, that this project will start and stop at a proper date? And also, lastly, I just can't help to notice, but you just changed the street name Crossley, Lawrence Crossley. I applaud that move, but within that spirit, you have an opportunity today to help people like us, my parents, who were immigrants, they had the immigrant experience as well. You can do something to change today so that you don't have to apologize 20, 30, 40...
I'm sorry, but your time has elapsed.
Thank you.
So, city clerk, is that the remaining time for the applicant?
Correct. So, we provided the original speaker five minutes, and then Ms. Rosario was provided with two additional minutes, and that does conclude public comment unless Victoria would like to speak.
No, I yield back time, thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. There are no public speakers?
That's correct.
Thank you. There being no other speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you for all of your comments. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Councilmember Garner and then Mayor Proton Middleton.
So, I have a lot of questions based on what was said by the Avila family. So, can we talk a bit more about the appraisal that was done? Also, the timeline in terms of the five years and just all of the information that was presented? Because that's not information that was in the staff report, and I think that would be really helpful for me to be able to make a decision on all of this.
I will speak to the five-year timeline that's, that the presenter, the speakers were referring to. Caltrans, as a requirement, will not allow us to do anything but a five-year term on temporary construction easements. So, when we go into a project, if the project takes six months, if it takes seven months, if it takes a year, we are obligated by Caltrans right-of-way to pay for five years, a five-year term. So, when, say we were to conclude our negotiations and we were able to obtain the temporary construction easement, but the project, for some reason, did not move forward in those five years, the city and the state would be obligated to go back to negotiations and pay for another five-year term. So, the term is five years, but in no way does that mean that any timeline of five years. Ms. Rosario, I believe, was mentioning that we would be impacting or the business for five years, that, or we would be storing materials on the property. That's not really the case. Our contractor would come in, do their work, and leave, and take their materials with them. And it would only be for the timeline that we would be doing construction. As I said earlier, I don't believe, I couldn't give you a good estimate as to the timeline, but I was figuring maybe two to three months to be in and out of that particular area during the construction of the bridge, which the construction of the bridge may be a year and a half or two. But as with the bridge, we have to pay all the 18 property owners for five years of temporary construction easement, regardless of the time that we actually are in construction. And I guess to the evaluation, I think we can still continue. The state is obligated to continue negotiations and provide current estimates for any future offers or for continuing negotiation with the property owners. So, we would use a current estimate.
Right. So, maybe Holland, you can talk about this a little bit more. I just want to understand, the appraisal was done in 2017. It hasn't been updated since. I'm just a little confused as to why it hasn't been updated and why we're negotiating with the family based on old information and that they're not being provided with new information? And here we are at this point, right?
So, the offer was made years ago based on appraisal that was done at the time. Since then, the appraisal has been updated, and it will be updated again to reflect, you know, the present date of value i- in the event, if the council decides to move forward with the resolution. So, the property owners would be compensated for a current dated value, just like Joel said. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to wade into this too much. It's not proper to discuss in this hearing, but that is, that is the state of the appraisal, Ms. Parker.
And can you also just explain that in a little bit more depth as to why we can't talk about the valuation at this time? Because I think there's a little confusion on that.
Right. I mean, yeah, it's just per the code, per the eminent domain code, you know, and... I mean, yeah, it's just per the code, per the eminent domain code, you know, and it's, the resolution of necessity is supposed to be sort of valuation blind, you know, not considering whether the council might be getting a good deal or a bad deal, you know, you want it to sort of be objective than that. You want it to be very, does the public need this, you know, does private, you know, weighing private injury versus the public good? You know, all those factors that I talked about at the beginning. And then the measure of just compensation is objective, you know, in a sense that both parties are supposed to get appraisals and talk about that. That's sort of a next step type of a thing. So it's supposed to be more of an objective valuation blind decision by the public body.
Okay, I'm still a little bit confused by that because for me to be able to determine whether or not this is reasonable and that it's not a private injury, I need to know that the family is being justly compensated. And if I don't know that, then it's really hard for me to say that there isn't a significant, you know, private injury to them. So I guess I just want to be able to know that there's assurances on the table that they're actually going to get that, basically that they're going to get a good deal as a small business in our community.
Right. I think injury is not valuation-based. I think, you know, with the law, I mean, I think we're talking, you know, potential damage to land, disruption of business, stuff like that. Just compensation as a concept wraps all of that together. So, you know, the city is a public entity, you know, it is responsible for dealing with people in good faith. I think that, I think that the city can make assurances that it will deal with the Avilas and any property owner in this similarly situated circumstance in good faith. In terms of addressing injury, that is also valuation blind. It's more, it's more like stuff like relocation of tenants, disruption of, taking of parking spots, stuff like that. You weigh injury like that, not so much in valuation terms. So again, yeah, go ahead.
And Councilmember Garner, if I could point to that finding, that as Mr. Stewart is indicating, that really has to do with how the project is, has been planned and located as opposed to just compensation. Just compensation is really something to be determined by the jury and not by the city council. And with regard to that finding about the project planning, I know a reference was made by the property owners as to acquiring property across the street. It should be noted that the property across the street has been widened to the full right-of-way width. So it would actually be unfair to them to require them to widen their road to the full right-of-way and then additional. Generally, courts consider an equal widening on both sides of the street to be project planning in a manner that is most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury as opposed to weighting it all to one side, which is what it sounds like the property owner was recommending.
If I can clarify, Holland, or to the city attorney, so you're saying legally we are not allowed to consider just compensation, that that's for a separate process? I just want to be clear because the applicant said it, the property owner said it's convenient, and you said it's the code.
That's correct.
Can you just explain the law plainly?
That's correct. The council is not allowed to consider just compensation in its decision today. That is a decision for another, at a later stage.
So what we are, and that's the law based on code of eminent domain? So what we are able to consider is if an offer of just compensation has been made.
Right, right, yeah. An offer for just compensation must be made for today's procedure to be proper. So, yeah, I mean, so we, so it has been made, you know, followed all the steps. And so, but, so the council's decision today must be blind to the valuation question.
Just to clarify something that was said, so we are required to provide fair market value, is that correct, based on the conversation of a 2017 appraisal? What, how do you define a just compensation?
Just compensation, legally speaking, you know, yeah, I mean, it's probably closest to fair market value. There's a lot of things that go into it. The city has gotten and will continue to update, you know, its appraisals and, you know, and seek qualified expert opinion. Property owners often get the same sort of expert consultation. The code provides that the condemning agency will provide $5,000 towards the cost of offsetting that appraisal. So just compensation is a fluid metric, but yeah, but fair market value is probably the closest thing that we could say to it. But yeah, I mean, it's, Mr. Ballinger is absolutely right, it's a question for the jury, you know, what is fair, what is just? Because that's the law, and the city will need to pay that if it goes forward today.
So when was an offer of just compensation made?
Joel, you might be able to help me on this, I believe 2018?
I don't have the exact date in front of me right now. We were waiting on our right-of-way agent. I don't believe she's joined the meeting, so it was 2017 or 2018.
Right.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner, did you have other questions or comments? And then I'll go to Mayor Proton Middleton.
I'll hold for now.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Middleton.
Question for the attorneys. I'm struggling to understand why if an offer was based on 2017 appraisals in 2017 or 2018, that just offer would not have been updated by 2021 when clearly values across the city have increased.
So, so we made the offer, so that we, the city, the city made the offer based on an appraisal that was current at the time, and then started and began engaging in negotiations with the property owner. Those negotiations continued for years. And over, you know, over the span of that time, appraisals were updated, numbers were exchanged, negotiations were ultimately not successful. But if the city were to move forward with condemnation, we would need an updated appraisal as of the current date of value. And that, and that would become the appraisal by which we would go off of. So the offer, the offer was years ago, if we, you know, and everything has been done by the book, if we were to go forward today, we would get an updated appraisal for the condemnation filing if that's what the council decided to do.
And what I understand you to be saying is the law already requires that you obtain that updated appraisal at the time. And this may be another one of those belt and suspenders kinds of discussions, but do we as city council have the ability to require that the appraisal be an updated appraisal at the time that, an agreement?
I'm not sure you need to be, you know, I mean, I think, you know, like there's a, there's...
I hear you, that's me, but there's a lack of trust here based on some of the past experience.
Sure. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if there's a finding or, you know, or a resolution that you could do. That might be more of a question for Jeff, but I don't, off the top of my head, I'm just not sure.
I will, I will say this, Councilmember, or Mayor Proton Middleton, it's not a legal requirement, but if that is something that the council is concerned about and the council would like to add that to the resolution, you certainly can as a legal matter.
Thank you. My next question's for Joel.
Yes.
Joel, please define for me what equipment, what materials, what we as a city would be storing on the work site?
The only material I could see being stored on the work site is the material that's being implemented into the construction. There wouldn't be any storage of equipment or any other material that doesn't belong there. What I'm trying to say is if a retaining wall is being constructed, the materials for the retaining wall would be delivered on-site and be used on-site as necessary. So from this construction, from the construction standpoint, I couldn't see any other material being stored there. I don't see any piece of equipment fitting within that area to store it overnight. It would be simply materials to be used on-site for the project.
When you say on-site, are you talking about right there at where that small retaining wall would go or this material that would be stored in their parking lot?
No, no, absolutely not. It would not be stored in their parking lot. For the most part, if the construction is happening and they have all their equipment, materials, and labor ready, the material would arrive on-site and they would be installing that as it arrives. There may be situations where the construction is happening, maybe at four o'clock at night, and they may leave materials there for the next day to continue working. In this particular situation, I don't see any reason that equipment would be left there for any reason.
Would we, at any time, be blocking access of patrons being able to either walk or drive into the facility?
From the, from my perspective, the answer would be no. There may be an area where we're working right adjacent to the patio that we may have to protect, you know, the workers or the pedestrians walking into the business, but from the construction site, I can't foresee us in any way impacting the driveways or any pedestrian access to any of the business.
Is there something that we can do to reassure the Avila family that we will not be blocking any access of their patrons to get into or out of the bakery or any delivery vans?
Yeah, one of the best methods we have is our specifications that our contractor has to adhere to. So we would, in particular for this situation, write a very strict specification that would, you know, prohibit the contractor from, you know, without explicit permission from the property owners from blocking any of their entrances. So there's ways that we can make the contractor adhere to it.
All right, I think that's going to be quite important. Last question I have, and I'm not sure who to ask it to, and I probably should have asked it earlier. As I understand it, this bakery is in the city limits of Cathedral City. Why is it that we in Palm Springs are exercising eminent, or have eminent domain responsibility for property that is outside our city?
Mayor Proton Middleton, that is a very good question. Many of these projects, when they cross jurisdictional boundaries, require really one of the public agencies to be the lead agency. In this case, because the majority of the project is in the city of Palm Springs, we have entered into a cooperative agreement with Cathedral City for the city of Palm Springs to be the lead agency, and that includes also exercising eminent domain when necessary. And that is actually allowed under one of the provisions of the Code of Civil Procedure. So it just makes sense to have one lead public agency, and it's allowed by law.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to correct, I asked a question and it wasn't answered exactly, but it's, the staff report says on February 21st, 2018, city council during closed session reviewed the fair market value of the all right-of-way acquisition for the project, and that we've been doing that for all of the different interests, and then it's been subject of negotiations with the owner since May 2018. So if I could just ask a question based on that, what do we typically do, right? If a property owner won't negotiate or can't negotiate, or you can't reach terms, for many, many years, we've, you know, done this numerous times. I know you said there are 18 property owners in this project alone. So can you say what we typically do to make sure a just offer of compensation is made? If there have been, this is three or four years that have elapsed, I remember because I've been on the city council since, we considered the fair market value in 2018. So what do we typically do on this?
Yes, Mayor Holcage, what we do is we provide the offer of just compensation based on the appraisal as approved by the city council, and that was done, as noted in the staff report, in early 2018. If a acquisition is not negotiated, we then bring forward this process, the resolution necessity process. If this is approved by the city council, then we would continue to negotiate with the property owners if they are willing to negotiate. And if they are willing to negotiate, we would update that appraisal with the current fair market value of the property so that they do get just compensation based on the current valuation date. And so that's what we would normally do, and that's what we'd be doing in this case.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or a motion? Councilmember Wood, and then Councilmember Corr. You're muted, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask some foundational question about interest and necessity, just to beef up the resolution that's attached. So this is a question for Engineering Staff Joel. Joel, this is in the Transportation Project Prioritization Study that CBAG has, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that basically, this is a regional, this improvement is of regional significance for the entire region, not just the city of Palm Springs?
That is correct.
Right. And then, do you know whereabouts, does it rank fairly high in that TPPS study?
It is ranked fairly high. I couldn't really recall where it sits in the ranking.
Okay, so it seems like this is not coming from the city of Palm Springs by these studies except by the region, but also by the fair market value of the necessity. And if I understand, we've made compensation to the owners, we will relook at that compensation to make sure that it's fair and just, and that there are only one of two properties that are currently that we need to use eminent domain on, is that correct?
Two properties with the same owners, essentially, the same family, correct?
Great, thank you. I just think that helps us understand the necessity for this particular project. And Joel, did you want to add anything of why the project is necessary besides regional movement of goods? Is there not also some environmental effects with this going through the wash that we want this?
I don't know that there's an environmental benefit that I can really quote right now. The widening of the project does allow for the six lanes, and it's essentially, it's a major arterial through several cities.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Seth.
Councilmember Corr, questions or comments or a motion?
Sure. Thank you. So I just want to clarify, I think most of everything that I wanted to ask has been asked, so I appreciate that. But there were comments that we wouldn't do this on the other side of the street, and then I heard that we already have, so I guess just a little bit more on that. So we've already done the five-foot widening on the other side of the street? Where there's Bank of America, it's a very large business?
It's not so much that we have done it, it's that it was done as part of the development of that property. And as mentioned, if this property were ever developed, the vacant parcel, that would have to be done there as well.
Okay, and then just one comment from Mr. Stewart. You mentioned, right, we'll update the appraisal as part of this process, that's what the law requires, so it is a current fair market value. And I think you said, but I want to make sure I understood it, the property owners can do an appraisal, and we would put in $5,000 towards their cost of their doing their own appraisal, so they have their appraisal for any future negotiation or if this goes to a court?
That's correct.
Okay, just to make sure that was clear, that we would give, we would pay $5,000 towards their appraisal.
Right, that's in this Code of Civil Procedure for every public agency across the state who goes through this process, they contribute $5,000 towards...
Okay, just to make sure the property owner knew that if this moves forward, they would be getting $5,000 towards doing an appraisal to get the current fair market value. So if the property has gone up in value, that is what would be utilized. Thank you. Okay, that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a question because I heard about discrimination, so I just want to be clear. So how many other properties are involved in this project?
There are 23 distinct, different properties with 19 owners, 18 of which have all agreed to the compensation.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner, I saw your hand raised.
Thanks. When is this project supposed to begin?
That's, that's an excellent question. If we don't get through this process... If we don't get through this process in a timely manner, the project does get delayed. So whenever we do complete the right-of-way phase, we then submit to Caltrans for authorization to proceed with construction. So if everything, if we say reach negotiations in the next month or so, we would then apply for Caltrans, approval for Caltrans to give us approval to move to the construction phase, which would then, you know, start the process of us putting the project out to bid, getting a contractor hired. So if everything worked out, we could start construction maybe a year or two from now. Caltrans has been very difficult to pin down when we can get our authorizations. We do have other, five other federally funded bridges which are going through the same process, and each one of them has a distinct timeline. So I wouldn't be able to accurately tell you when exactly the construction would be. Our hope would be if we are able to get through the right-of-way phase and move directly into the construction phase, the bidding portion of it, I would want to be in construction possibly by maybe next summer or maybe, yeah, summer would probably be the earliest.
Thank you. So in terms of what I'm hearing tonight from the Avila family, I'm hearing that you are okay with the possibility of selling of the property, but you want the proper evaluations, you want the proper process done. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm understanding you properly.
It is correct, but I'm also surprised that your staff is leaving out a lot of other discussions we've had throughout the years, such as the extension of the sewer line. We have history where I've been harassed by code enforcement asking us to connect to sewer. We don't have access to sewer. We've been asking for sewer. My father has been asking for sewer for 33 years. So Joel has left out a huge part of the conversation, which is what I'm trying to alert your council. If you have no idea the conversations we've had, that might be part of the argument of our discrimination and that, why we threw that word in. So perhaps, you know, maybe a public records request. I can, I'm actually working on emailing you the conversations I've had with Joel, where he told me that sewer was included, but failed to provide any documentation to show me that sewer is included.
Okay. Thank you. So Mr. Stewart, in terms of the process here, so I heard Joel talk about the fact that if we reached negotiation on this, the project could move forward to Caltrans, et cetera. But so say today we pass this condemnation, you would still need to negotiate with the family, right? So that would, then that would need to be complete before the city could actually talk to Caltrans and say that we can move forward, right?
Yes. Yes and no. I mean, so the resolution of necessity would allow the city council or the city of Palm Springs to file a condemnation action, you know, to initiate an eminent domain proceeding against, to acquire this property. We could get the appraisal updated and the pleadings on file, you know, maybe within 30 to 60 days. And then that would set off, you know, just a litigation timeline. We could potentially have possession of, so we could, if the city wanted, we could seek what's called prejudiced possession, which means filing a motion. We could go through that process and potentially have possession for the city within 90 to 120 days of filing the lawsuit. So we're looking at towards the end of the year. That's simply done if there are construction or funding deadlines that the public agency wants to meet. And that would require a more swift resolution of a lawsuit that litigation just never could meet on its own. So the Code of Civil Procedure bakes in that sort of, that procedure so that public entities are allowed to get possession of the property to start these projects, to get funding while the question of just compensation is sorted out.
Okay. Thank you. So what it seems like that we have here is that we're not all on the same page in terms of what's been offered already, and I would like for us to be able to offer the 2021, you know, valuation, et cetera, and work with the family from that point, right? I mean, I feel really uncomfortable with moving forward with a condemnation when we don't, they weren't even offered the 2021 valuation. And I understand that according to the attorneys, that what's been offered is allowed, et cetera. But I understand why there's so much frustration on this end because there hasn't been anything that's been updated. And I think, sure, there's a lot of things to be said for why it was stalled, whose fault it was, et cetera, et cetera, and we could go through that forever. But I think the most important thing right now is that we're here now and that we're offering what needs to be offered and that the family is able to come to the table with the city and discuss these current prices and not be sitting here in front of us with old information. But that's not a question. It's just, that's just my comments on what's kind of unfolding in front of us.
Go ahead, Holland, if you have a response, because I think that I heard.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I don't want my comment earlier to be misconstrued. Our offer back in 2018, 2017, whenever it was, was done properly. Negotiations after that have been very fluid. I haven't been a part of those. Joel could probably speak to those more, you know, more readily. I think that, it's my understanding that negotiations have continued, you know, and even current into this year. Joel, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but that is my understanding. I just didn't want it to seem like I was saying that, you know, that we had not discussed current numbers with them since the original offer package, because that was, if I did say that, then it was unintentional.
No, no, I understand that. But my concern is that it, from what we've heard from staff, we don't have 2021 numbers or even 2020 numbers. So that's my concern.
Joel, can you explain what has been offered in a way that we're legally allowed to discuss?
Mayor, Mayor Holcage, and this is partially in answer to councilmember Garner's question. The reason we don't have a 2021 appraisal is because we have been, staff has been attempting to negotiate the price with the property owners, and it takes two people to negotiate. And we could get a 2021 appraisal, but if the other party doesn't negotiate with us, it becomes 2022, and then 2023, and then 2024, and then the 2021 appraisal is outdated again. So while staff and the city attorney's office is certainly willing to obtain another appraisal and stands ready to negotiate with the property owners, this step is really necessary in order to move forward with this project. I will also point out that the city has offered, as part of the offer of just compensation and the offer to appraise and notice to appraise, we have offered to provide that $5,000 to the property owners. That offer was not accepted, but it still remains open. If the property owners want to negotiate with us, we can certainly do that. But this is the last property that is required to be acquired for this project to move forward. So that is why city staff and the city attorney's office is asking for this resolution to be adopted tonight.
Councilmember Coors.
Oh, the city attorney, just quickly. So just so I understand it, if we pass that there's a necessity, we would do another appraisal, we would provide that to the property owner with, I presume, an offer to buy it at that appraisal. We'd give them $5,000 due to their own appraisal to confirm that before we would file anything in court. Is that accurate?
Yes. If that's the condition the council wishes to impose on city staff, then that's what we would accept.
Okay. So that would, that would be my motion.
I second that. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Protim.
I would also like to offer a friendly amendment that construction crews be required to not block access to the patrons trying to enter either the driveway or the entrances to the bakery.
So to the maker of the motion, councilmember Coors.
Yeah, just would want to check with Joel, who said there might be hours where that one or the other might be limited to some degree, but not block total access? Is that what you're getting at, councilmember Protim?
Yes.
Total access? Okay. I'm fine with that.
Joel, does that work?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, that does work.
Thank you. So that's accepted by the maker of the motion, and me as the second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, thank you for being here tonight, and I know that there's a longstanding history that you raised, and please do forward us any emails that you'd like us to review. Typically, you know, we need those ahead of time or during, before the public hearing starts so that we can review them per the notice. But we do review everything that we receive. So thank you for being here tonight and for your business and everything that you do for our community. So we will have a roll call vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Mayor Holcage.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
No.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Middleton.
Hi.
Motion passes four to one.
So the next item on the agenda is item 2B, a public hearing to consider amendments to the downtown Palm Springs specific plan to revise the architectural review process. Can we have a staff report, please?
Downtown Palm Springs specific plan to align the architectural review process with other changes that we've made to our zoning code. The downtown Palm Springs specific plan has a unique process, as illustrated in the diagram here on the screen, the upper portion of the screen. Instead of a simple process where projects are reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee and Planning Commission, the downtown Palm Springs specific plan requires city council approval for all architectural review applications currently. As we looked at making modifications to the process to mirror the changes that we've recently made to the zoning code, we've come up with the process that's illustrated in the bottom part of the screen. What we're proposing for the process is that we would begin with a pre-submital conference with staff, which is what we're requiring for the new process. Step two is unique in that we would have a joint study session between the Planning Commission and the Architectural Review Committee to review the proposed design together. One of the reasons why this was suggested by the Planning Commission is looking at the recent project that was proposed. When the Architectural Review Committee and Planning Commission considered the items separately, there were certain disagreements, if you will, or there were certain areas where the two bodies did not give the same recommendations to the applicant. And so as a means to streamline the process and to be able to make it a little bit easier to get through the process, the Planning Commission has recommended step two, which is a joint study session. At the joint study session, the Planning Commission and Architectural Review Committee would give comments to the applicant but wouldn't take formal action. Step three would be the formal submittal of the architectural review and development permit applications. The applicant would be able to take into consideration the comments received earlier in the study session. Step four, the Planning Commission would review the development permit application. What they're reviewing there is the height, the massing, conformance with development standards, et cetera. Retaining the same process as we currently have, city council would be required to take final action on the development permit application. Once that application is approved, then the Architectural Review Committee would review the architectural details of the project. So while the height and massing were already set by Planning Commission and City Council, Architectural Review Committee would be looking at the colors, the materials, any landscaping, and other similar architectural details. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their recent meeting and voted six to zero to recommend approval of this process as proposed. They also want to review the process in 12 months to see how it is working. I might also note that we have reviewed this proposed process with the majority landholder within the downtown Palm Springs specific plan area. They have no objections to the process as proposed. That concludes my staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Mayor Protim Middleton.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Flynn, could you, I'm a little concerned about the Architectural Review Committee reviewing something after city council has done review. I'm not aware of any other situation where we're not the last step. Could you talk about why that was defined this way?
Certainly. And if I could have the slide back up on the screen again, let me just back up. So Mayor Protim, as you're aware, we've made some changes to our architectural review process, and what we are doing is dividing it into two parts. What we're calling the development permit review, which is done by the Planning Commission, that's conducted first, and then architectural review occurs after the Planning Commission takes action. That's the standard process that we've adopted citywide, keeping in mind that the downtown specific plan is a little bit unique. So in looking at the bottom part of this slide, the standard process elsewhere in the city would be step one, the pre-submital conference, step three, the formal submittal of the application, step four, the Planning Commission taking action on the development permit, which would be a review of development standards such as height, massing, parking, setbacks, lot coverage, those types of things. And then step six, which is a review of the architectural details by the Architectural Review Committee. One of the reasons why we set the process up this way was so that we could finalize the scope of the project, if you will, by the Planning Commission first in terms of the placement of the buildings, the height of the buildings, et cetera, and any waivers of standards by the Planning Commission first before we look at the architectural details. As we had noted when we reviewed this several months ago, one of the issues that we've had in the past with having Architectural Review Committee go first is that sometimes there are details, such as conformance to development standards, that the Planning Commission really needs to take care of first before we can concentrate on architectural details. And so for that reason, that's why we're having the Architectural Review Committee go last. I hope that answers your question. If you need additional detail, I'd be happy to expound upon that.
So if the, there's an appeal from Architectural Review Committee, is there then a step seven to come back to city council, or who would be responsible for reviewing or responding to a dispute involving ARC?
The way we have it established in the zoning code is that the Planning Commission would hear appeals of the architectural review application. So if the ARC were to deny an architectural review application, it would go back to the Planning Commission for final approval.
And then ultimately back to city council?
Potentially.
Potentially. Hopefully not.
Hopefully not.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Sorry, Mayor Protim.
Yeah, that answers my question.
Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. City clerk, are there any speakers?
Madam Mayor, there's no public comment for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions or a motion from councilmembers? Councilmember Coors and then councilmember Woods.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the item.
Thank you. Councilmember Woods.
I'll second it, but I just wanted to add a comment that step two is going to be vital in our downtown project and making sure that our staff, our planning commission, our architectural review all work together. And I give you the example of the condominium project that was just approved, where the Virgin Hotel was going to be, that went through many iterations before it became Virgin Hotel was going to be, that went through many iterations before it became what it was before it came to us. So step number two is going to be vital in making this work. So I second the motion.
Thank you, there's a motion by Councilmember Corz, seconded by Councilmember Woods. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Corz.
Yep.
Councilmember Woods. I'm sorry, Council. Thank you. Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, the next item is Item 2C, a public hearing under the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act for issuance of revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $20 million to assist in the acquisition, development, construction, and equipping of a 60-unit multifamily rental housing facility for low-income households to be located at 3130 North Indian Canyon Drive. Can we have a staff report, please?
Counsel? Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protim and Counsel. The item before you is a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR. TFR requires that a public hearing be held by governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. Community Housing Opportunities Corporation has asked that the California Municipal Finance Authority, the CMFA, be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $20 million. The proceeds of the bonds will be used for the acquisition, development, construction, and equipping of a 60-unit multifamily rental housing facility for low-income households to be located at 3130 North Indian Canyon Drive in the city of Palm Springs. The CMFA is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofits, organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the city of Palm Springs will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. This is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purpose of satisfying the requirement of TFR, the code in the California Government Code, Section 6500. And that concludes my opening. Staff is available for any questions, as is the developer and CMFA representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. City Clerk, are there any speakers?
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment on this public hearing.
Thank you, City Clerk. So there being no speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from city council or a motion?
We'll move the item.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Corz.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, so at 7:45, usually we take a break around eight. The next item is the public hearing item for the budget. Would Council like to take a break now or after that?
Yes, now.
Let's take a 10-minute break, so we will go into recess until 7:55, and we will re-adjourn then. Thank you.
Okay, we will come back and the next item is item 2D. A public hearing to consider adoption of the fiscal year 2021-2022 comprehensive budget and five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2022 to 2026. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to present to you tonight for your adoption, the fiscal year 2122 comprehensive budget. This follows from your review of the general fund budget on three prior meetings, as well as the other funds at the last city council meeting. The only change that has been made in the budget document since the last council meeting was to reduce revenue to account for the phase-in of the cannabis permit fees. You might recall that after that discussion, the direction of the council was to implement that increase over three years. And so accordingly, there will be a reduction in revenue in the next two years until that full phase-in is completed. So that reduced the revenue to 127.4 million, which is 1.8 below estimated revenue for this current fiscal year. On the expenditure side, expenditures remain the same at 127.5 million, which is 2.8% above fiscal year 1920 expenditures. So we're presenting the budget approximately balanced. And I say approximately because there's, due to that reduction in revenue, about $159,000 deficit. But we want to point out that with 127.5 million budget, that's only 0.1% of the budget. It's within the margin of error on our estimates for revenue and expenditures. It's not something that we consider significant. And in fact, in tracking revenues in the current fiscal year, you'll recall on April 22nd, we projected end of this current fiscal year revenues. And we're seeing property tax revenues that are exceeding those projections. So this deficit will be more than made up with a combination of additional revenues this fiscal year, as well as salary savings in the next fiscal year. And there's ways we can adopt the budget tonight if it's your direction to eliminate any deficit by simply counting for salary savings as an expenditure item, which would wipe that deficit out. Additionally, tonight, you're being asked to adopt the allocated positions and compensation plan. As presented at the prior meetings, we are increasing the plan for a number of positions. Four positions for code compliance, as we've discussed at several meetings, as well as some additional positions at the airport, which increases the total allocated positions to 516, with 24 of those allocated but remaining frozen and unfunded. And as I mentioned at the last council meeting, as we went through all the other funds, the other funds, revenue and expenditures are, you know, add to the comprehensive budget. The deficit there is just carryover spending for capital projects. And so tonight, what we would recommend to you after opening the public hearing and taking testimony, we would ask you to adopt the resolution adopting the allocated positions and compensation plan and pay schedule. Adopt the resolution approving the budget. Adopt the resolution for the successor agency budget, as well as adopting the appropriations limit. And so with that, we'll close our presentation. We're here for questions and ready for you to take action tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Marcus, I don't think this question, as I understand it, we're allocating $6 million for street repairs in this year's budget?
That's correct. Yeah, out of this current fiscal year in Measure J, you did take action at the last council meeting to allocate 6 million and approved us moving forward with bidding that project.
All right. And as I understand it, if we continue to allocate at this pace, it will take us, is it six years in order to get PCI scores up to 60 completed? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, yes.
And then another six years for a total 12 to get to all streets at a score of 70 or better?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay. I guess I, I'll throw my quick comment. If revenues increase over the course of this year, I would ask staff to, staff and city council, to come back and take a look at whether or not we can accelerate the pace of street repairs so that it does not take us over another decade to get to every street a score of 70 or better.
Thank you. Other questions for city staff? Before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. City clerk, are there any public comments?
Madam Mayor, there are no public comments for this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a discussion or additional questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would personally like to see us come out with a balanced budget. And the staff has recommended that maybe we can do it through staff savings, or we can look at it through some of the approved projects. So that was one thing that I'd like to see. I know it's only $156,000, but I think that is an important gap to fill for precedence, that we have a balanced budget. And then I had a chance to talk to staff about the Anico Track Sewer. I think it's the last time we talked. We didn't want to exclusively give one area over another that's poor or in the same poor census tract priority. So I would just say, we just want to say sewer and leave the amount of money of $585,000 in there. And just basically say sewer improvements and leave it at that. And then let staff work out what areas are low income, what areas can deserve the sewer, what the priority should be for that.
Can you explain more about that, please, Councilmember Wood, so I can follow along?
Yeah, the Anico Track, I think, was brought up by Councilmember Garner. And as a track that needed sewer, that they were on subject tank.
And for city staff, I think that we had commented that we'd gotten to a place where we were going to allocate the money. And were we deciding on final projects for Measure J now or later?
I believe the direction was to allocate and then follow up in September with the Measure J Commission and have a joint meeting to decide on all of those allocations for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. That was my memory too, since I had some feedback about some of those projects as well. So Councilmember Wood, does that address your concern?
Yeah, I just want to just basically say that page 2D-105 says sewer versus Anico Track sewer. It just says sewer. And then we can work out, you know, I mean, I want to get Anico Track sewer fixed. I'd like to get the other sewers, you know, people out of subject, off subject if we can possibly do it and afford it. But it's really about being fair across the board.
Thank you. So for city staff, if we are allocating the funding for Measure J, but deciding on final projects later with the Measure J Commission's input, how do you, what do we do with page 2D-105 that does describe the project?
So instead of showing all of those individual projects with the funding, it would all be unscheduled. So we'll make that change. So all of that funding except for, would be swept into an unscheduled account for distribution and allocation at a later date.
Will that delay any of those projects?
It could. At some point, we need to have projects approved for funding to proceed. So some of those projects, I believe that funding is to add to funding that's previously been allocated. But as long as you can track with the Measure J Commission sometime in the fall, then it shouldn't delay moving forward with those projects.
And I, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I don't know if I would necessarily vote that drastically with it. I would just basically, because the emergency generators we maybe want to do, ensure that they're funded. The HVAC for the water treatment program, we want to fund. And we do want to fund the sewers, but just call it sewer. I think that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. I had had broader input, and it depends on where the rest of the city council is, that we really hadn't decided on final Measure J projects for this year. And we haven't gotten the input or a joint meeting with the Measure J Commission. So it's up to staff if the recommendation is just to allocate it generally and bring this back to a date certain or a time where it won't delay any projects. Or if we want to sit here and discuss which ones need to go forward now and be allocated. I know we've, you know, heard council direction for some of these, but not all of them. And some of them were even new to me during this multiple cycles now. City staff, do you have a good recommendation?
What I can say is that these allocations were reviewed and recommended by the Measure J Commission. And what we attempted to do over the five-year CIP that was presented was prioritize funding over multiple years, all of the previously approved and funded Measure J projects that had been canceled, with that funding used to bridge the gap on the prior two fiscal year's projected deficits. So the emergency generators, the water treatment, the rack field LED project, you know, those, these are all projects that were previously reviewed and approved by council and funded. So that's why it was presented for your approval and allocation. But it won't delay these projects significantly if you were to wait and have a detailed discussion in September at a joint meeting with Measure J to fully review with them how the commission and staff are approaching, you know, again strategically, how to allocate the Measure J funds over multiple years to bring all these projects forward.
Thank you. I would propose that we do that as council, because I don't think council's given policy direction on all of these projects. And some are new to me and probably the committee. So does that work for council if we bring that conversation back to a different agenda item in the fall? I'm seeing heads nod. Is there any opposition to that? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wood, do you have other comments?
No, that's it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Cor.
I would move the budget. Would that change?
Would the change?
Yes, the change that we just discussed around Measure J and bringing that back.
And the, and the no deficit.
So, may I ask the city manager, how do you want to handle that issue? I think you said we would, that wouldn't be, we have revenue coming in, but...
Yeah, so absolutely, we could close the small deficit either by refining estimates of certain revenues or by accounting for things like vacancy savings that we know are going to occur, but we historically have not budgeted for those. I would just mention, I think philosophically, we're on board with not having significant deficits. But just recall that with a general fund, if at any point we simply underestimate our revenues, we might end up with a situation where we have a surplus. The only way to catch up from that is to have a deficit in a future year. So as a matter of policy, if we attempted to never have a deficit in our operating account, the consequence is any money that for some reason accumulates sits in a savings account forever. So we probably want to do two different things. One is have a good policy on reserve balance. And the other is generally allow us to sometimes accumulate additional savings and spend those savings in a future year, which will technically create a deficit. So for this year, it will be easy to eliminate, but I just kind of wanted to mention that for future years, I don't think we want those funds to accumulate indefinitely.
Yes, we do want to spend money that we accumulate. So that makes sense. Is that satisfactory, Councilmember Wood? Okay.
There's a motion in this section. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, thank you to staff for all of your hard work on this budget. Very much appreciate you. If we were in chambers, we would all be applauding you. Thank you for your hard work in going through this process with us. We know it's very difficult due to the pandemic and the impacts on tourism. And a lot is unknown. So you've done an incredible job over the last year and then into these fiscal years. So thank you. So with that, can we have a roll call vote, please?
And Madam Mayor, for clarification, I have Councilmember Cor as the motion maker. Who was the second?
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. Councilmember Cor.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. City clerk, if you'd like, I can repeat who makes the motion in a second. It just seemed like a quicker way of not always saying that out loud for you.
You don't need to do that. I just missed this one.
Okay, thank you. So the next item, there's no legislative items tonight. So the next item is unfinished business. So 4A, review of terms for an operations agreement with Well in the Desert and Martha's Village and Kitchen for day use homeless services and wraparound services at 225 South El Cielo Road. Can we have a staff report, please?
So, Madam Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, and council members, do we have the remote anywhere? And if we could have item 4A presentation brought up? Thank you. Oh, I almost made it a tougher hearing. The Well in the Desert currently operates a year-round drop-in center for homeless individuals, winter month warming center, and summer month cooling center at 441 South Calle Encilia, pursuant to a conditional use permit. However, this past April, the city council voted to revoke the CUP, conditional use permit, and asked staff to work with Well in the Desert to potentially relocate them to the boxing club located at 225 South El Cielo. The Well in the Desert provided the city with conceptual plans, included in your staff report, showing how the boxing club facility would need to be improved to accommodate their operation. It should be noted that Well in the Desert will be partnering with Martha's Village and Kitchen, which will provide wraparound services at the site, which include case management, obtaining housing, securing health, disability, social security, and other benefits, employment activities, and also includes monitoring and evaluating the program's activities. As explained in the staff report, the requirements under the conditional use permit at 441 South Calle Encilia will be incorporated into an operations agreement. These include taking measures that patrons do not loiter, create noise, litter, or cause disturbances, that patrons must leave the property promptly after closing, onsite security officers and a security plan complying with the city's noise ordinance, no overnight occupancy, 24-hour contact number, no outside storage, a review period for feedback on what is working and what is not. So those are just some of the conditional use permit items that are currently required that will be anticipated to be incorporated into the operating agreement with the service providers. So I did want to point out, and I'm not sure if you can read this very well, but we do now have the operating budget for Well in the Desert, as well as Martha's. You'll see that there are stipends for payments to their staff of about $132,000. And their facilities budget, I should note, includes offices at 441 South Calle Encilia, as well as properties used to provide shelter to patrons. The total annual budget for Well in the Desert operations is $560,000. I also want to mention that you'll see a line for client assistance in the amount of $172,000. This includes cash assistance, clothing, employment and education, food services, groceries, outreach, housing goods, laundry, mental health assistance, rent and utility assistance, transportation assistance, and the shelter assistance I had mentioned earlier. In addition, Martha's will also provide wraparound services to individuals, which include case management, obtaining permanent housing and supportive housing. And if no housing is available, they will also place individuals into appropriate programs and shelter. And if no housing is available, they will also place individuals into appropriate programs and shelter. They also provide outreach with HMIS and coordinated entry processing, which is a requirement for county-funded projects. Securing health, disability, social security, as previously mentioned. Help individuals develop computer skills, internet searches for employment, completing online applications, taking basic first aid courses, and obtaining food handler certificates. Again, Martha's will be responsible for monitoring and evaluating the program's activities. That includes collecting and analyzing statistical records, clients' intake data, program participation, and demographic profiles. Case managers will use desktop computers and laptops for data collection and data entry into the agency's databases and HMIS. I should have advanced the slides a couple of slides ago. So there's the Martha's operating budget. Again, this is already in the staff report that's available online. So we have been trying to compile all of the facility costs that would be associated with the proposed build-out as the Well in the Desert has provided to us. We'll see that the storage containers are 4,980 each, or for two, 9,960. The modular offices being requested are 24,000 each, or for two would be $48,000. The city has already purchased a mobile shower and bathroom for the amount of $30,128 that could be a price point for what it would cost for two showers and bathrooms, or if this bathroom is not suitable for use at the site. And again, it includes two showers and two baths in this mobile bathroom. Storage containers are ready. The, we don't have cost information for the pavers or grass being proposed in this project. And it should be pointed out that the existing CUP does not allow for outdoor seating, misters, and shade structures. So that is something that may enhance the project, but for the council to consider, it is currently not allowed in the current conditional use permit. The maintenance costs and utilities for the boxing club right now are approximately $10,000, $10,500. But this does not include the powering for two mobile office units and any other facilities that may be added to the site.
Jay, is that $10,000 a year?
That is $10,000 a year. And keeping in mind, the building really had not been used that much in the past year. So it was used on a very limited basis. The rent is estimated to be $3,137, which is different from what's in the staff report because we are now factoring in rent on the two modular offices. So those are, those total, I believe, 720,000, 720 square feet. So that's been added to the square footage being calculated. And as you have the site planned in your agenda package, I will just go through these very quickly. Here's an overall view. And what, to describe them more, in the, towards the top of the page, you can see the location of the modular units in the parking lot. And here's a 3D rendering provided by the Well in the Desert. Again, as you can see towards the top of this image, there are shade structures, a pergola in a grassy area and a paved area under the pergola that, under the current terms of the CUP, aren't, they don't exist on the site now. And the current CUP does not allow for outside seating, shade structures, or misting systems. Just another view of the site. I should also point out, the Well in the Desert and the service provider team is proposing to provide corrugated steel fencing with ficus hedges aligning on the interior. You can see those around the perimeter of the building. However, staff has some concerns with how hot the corrugated metal might become during the hot summer and the line of sight visibility for police staff needing to look into the property. So those are some comments that did come in from staff. Going back to this slide here, this is the southern portion of the property, and those structures represent potentially new bathrooms and showers on the property if the mobile units do not work out very well. The concern with these would be making sure they do not block any required ADA access to the boxing club building. But of course, the entire project would have to go through the review and approval process of the city. So, council, this, really, this proposal that came in, we're wanting to know if it, if the services, the management plan, and the facility layout is in line with your expectations for the boxing club building. And we'd, you know, like to have that conversation. And I believe representatives from Well in the Desert and Martha's Village are available to answer other questions you may have.
Thank you. So first, we'll just do questions of staff. Do any councilmembers have questions or comments? This isn't a public hearing, so we can do them all together. Councilmember Court?
Great, thank you. Jay, thank you for that and the work that staff has done so far on this. I do have a question for both Well in the Desert and for Martha's Village. Do you have an idea how many staff each organization will have?
I do not. Are they available to answer?
We can, we can do that.
Okay.
After staff. But just the question I'm going to have is, I know the Well has said they have, I think, 20 staff, and you listed $132,000, which would be about $6,500 each a year. So I just want to understand that, so just, I'm sure they're listening. So when that question comes up, you know, benefits, workers' compensation costs, just for the amount of staff they have. And you described them as stipends, so I just want to get some more information on that. But I can save that for when we're done with staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there questions for staff? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilmember Court's grabbed a couple of questions I was going to ask. But Jay, the budget projection that you received for Well in the Desert, that was not in the staff report. When did you receive that?
I believe I received it this morning.
That's what I thought. Have you had a chance to evaluate that at all?
I did have a good chance to go through it. It, Mayor Pro Tem, it is, appears to be a budget, a projection of expenditures, even though it's for the current year period. And what I did not see was the matching revenue side for these expenditures. And, you know, perhaps the Well can't address that. But, you know, I'm, I was kind of looking for the revenue sources as well as verifying the expenditures.
And is there any supporting data that you received that would document these expenses such as how much rent is going to be paid for facility fees? And I don't have that chart in front of me. But are you able to document these expenses are, in fact, the appropriate amounts for their operations?
I did not receive any supporting documentation, but I believe the rent for the office building was approximately $2,900 a month, and that seems reasonable for office rental.
Okay. And how much were they projecting for a year, then?
Rent-wise?
Perhaps you could put that chart back up for us and for the public.
Oh, thank you.
That'd be great. And if I could ask the staff, is it possible for us to get a printout version of that document since this is the first we're seeing it? I know we're all in our offices here at City Hall. That would be very helpful. And Jay, yes, if you could pull it up again?
There we go.
Yeah, facilities, $139,000. Does that math work out, Jay, $139,000 for a $2,900 a month rent?
Let me just double-check that, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm seeing for the Caye Encilia office building, rent of $2,512 per month. Times 12 is $30,150. There are, one, two, three, four, five, six other properties, which include storage unit properties, properties that appear to be residences used to provide shelter to individuals. Included in the rent calculation are maintenance, repairs, and upkeep, and utilities. So the way this data is organized and totaling up to $139,000 is several categories of expenses for six properties. Or seven properties, I should say.
What are the other six properties?
They are listed as 160 Loring, 181 North Indian, 65827 Fifth Street, 351 North Hermosa, 19555 VB Road, and one categorized as storage units.
So I understand that the Well's operating a drop-in center?
That is correct. The drop-in center is their operation at Caye Encilia. Some of the other services they provide do include assisting individuals with shelter. And the storage units, I would presume, are for supplies and perhaps individuals who have need of storage, homeless individuals who have belongings that need to be stored.
I don't have any familiar, or very limited familiarity with what these other operations are. They certainly don't seem to be consistent with the drop-in shelter.
If we were to isolate just the rent for Caye Encilia, it would be $30,150.
That still leaves another $100,000 to be accounted for.
So, Jay, if I can, Mayor Pro Tem, if I can go on, add to that. So this is the annual operating budget for Well in the Desert. Did we get a specific operating budget for operating the boxing club as a cooling center? Or their operating budget for Caye Encilia's cooling center?
No, we did not. This is, this looks to be the entire budget detail. And I think it would have to be specific line items pulled out where you could, say for the, where the Caye Encilia property is listed. And then the rest on a pro-rata basis or actual basis with, you know, with the backup documentation on how, you know, allocations for, say, groceries and food service are provided.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have other questions or comments?
I'll save my comments. And I may have some other questions, but I'll defer to others then.
Thank you. Other questions for Jay? Or other city staff, since Jay is standing up there at the podium? Councilmember Garner?
Jay, can you talk a little bit more about the role of Martha's? It sounds like Martha's is taking a bigger role in this. Can you talk about that partnership?
Yes. Actually, there is some history with Martha's and the Well working together. You may recall, we had a, an agreement with Martha's to provide wraparound services for homeless individuals. Martha's was housed also on Caye Encilia with the Well in the Desert. So they were there, working together, working with the same clientele. So their role under a previous contract that we had to provide wraparound services, it will also carry forward to, as proposed, to the boxing club. It just so happens that Martha's is an established contractor with the county, securing grant funds at the state and federal level. And so they have the infrastructure in-house to provide the reporting and analysis of the individuals that are served. So Martha's, while we did have our contract provided very detailed monthly reports on the services provided and the outcomes by individual.
Other questions for Jay? Jay, I have a few. So we funded Well in the Desert before, for the cooling center. And then I know that we couldn't, we've given a number of types of funding over the past few years. So do we have outcomes for that funding that we get from providers? Like how many people have been housed? How many people have been referred into different types of services? You know, those types of outcomes? How many people have transitioned out of homelessness, that type of thing?
We have that information for the providers that the city contracted with specifically to provide the wraparound services, such as what I'm describing, what I described that Martha's had provided. And also with the counties, well, it's the county, it's the city's crisis team, but the county staff that participated on that, they also provided detailed outcome reports. So the answer is yes. In terms of reports from Well in the Desert, we not, to my knowledge, kind of did not have that type of contractual agreement with them. But, so we don't have detailed numbers from Well in the Desert in that sense.
So we have, you said we have that for contractors that have operated out of Well in the Desert, like Martha's, like the crisis management teams, but you're saying we don't have that for the Well in the Desert services? Is that right?
That's correct, unless some of those services were coordinated through other offices. So I'm not, and, and I think for the, a long time, they were simply community grant funds, and I don't know if they had any strings attached in terms of reporting or other than a brief report, a summary report of what they did with the funds that they received from the city.
Thank you. And do we know how many total people, so unduplicated people, access the cooling center at Caye and Celia, and how many we might expect and need to plan for at the boxing club location?
That number seems to shift a lot. In a conversation with Linda Barak, who I believe is also available, she indicated a very high number had actually come through the center in the recent months. So, you know, it's, it's, it's been fluctuating, I believe, at the cooling center, and so at this point, staff does not have a count of the unduplicated individuals coming through the cooling center at Well in the Desert.
Thank you. I know that we've gotten duplicated numbers from Well in the Desert. We've had this conversation a few times, where, you know, there's 33,000 bottles of water that have been given out per year, but we don't know if that's serving, you know, X amount of people a bottle of water every day, or multiple bottles. So it's hard to plan then. I think we need to know how many people are going to use this boxing club, so we know how many people it can fit safely, and what might be the exterior improvements, as you described, the other buildings and things like that, if we need to think through mobiles or other, you know, increased capacity. So could we write in, into an agreement, if we were to contract with one or both of these agencies, a requirement to track unduplicated numbers, a require to track outcomes, a require to track numbers in terms of, you know, who's getting referred to services, who's exiting homelessness, who's entering housing, and then a requirement to use the HMIS tracking system that my understanding is that most, if not all, agencies are required to use. So we have a consistent system of homeless people in the valley, and my understanding is that Well in the Desert doesn't use HMIS. Is that right?
I have not been informed that they do utilize HMIS. However, Martha's Village does.
Is that required to get certain federal or state funding that's coming down for homelessness or housing?
It, it is being required more as new funding is made available, particularly at the state and county levels. So yes, that is definitely a requirement.
So we could require that in an operations agreement?
Depending on the source of funds we use, Madam Mayor, we may have to require that.
Okay. Thank you. And then you described the sort of budget, and did that include the whole budget to develop the beautiful project that we see in our packet and that you presented?
It did not. That was the operating budget. The development budget, the build-out budget, we've got costs up to $88,000 right now, but there's still a number of items that are missing, such as the type of fence we plan to move forward with, whether or not the site, the project, will include shade structures and grass, and the landscaping that's being proposed, and the types of bathrooms we ultimately use. The connections of the bathrooms to permanent water and sewer lines would also be consideration. So those costs, I think, could, $88,000 could easily double, if not go higher than that.
Is the request of the city fund the facility improvement and/or the maintenance cost, as well as the rent cost?
If I understand your, your question, it's, is the city requiring this, or is the city proposing to cover these costs? I wasn't sure I caught that.
Who's going to pay for the facility improvement and the maintenance cost?
Yes, those would be items that are still to be negotiated. That would come out as part of the operating agreement. So yes, those, that has not yet been determined.
Thanks. And has city, and maybe city staff can do an independent review of what those costs might be, because that does seem low for what is pictured.
We, we definitely could. At this point, all we've done is identified the cost of acquiring additional facilities and structures, and we do not know what it would cost for, say, full installation of a new shower and bathroom facility. So, and if, if we would want it to be a new bathroom and shower, or if a temporary better serves the city's long-term purposes.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have. I might have some other about implementation or, or conditions or something like that, but I'll see if any of my other colleagues have any questions for city staff. Seeing none, do you want to, Mayor Protem?
I have a question for staff. We received in public comment, a number of very thoughtful comments regarding it being far more appropriate for us to be contracting with Martha's, and that the Well in the Desert being a, a service that is perhaps provided to Martha's, but one that would be under the authority and control of Martha's. Is that something that staff would like to comment on?
Yes. I don't know if Justin wanted to jump in, but I would just say, Mayor Protem, this is more so a follow-up to the meeting from April 22nd, where this was the direction provided to staff to find a facility that might work for Well in the Desert. And so that's where we're at. We've, yes, we've kind of peeled back the layers of the onion and found some other opportunities, but we're happy to take direction from the council, however you please.
And I might just add that, given the existing partnership between Martha's and Well in the Desert, we had already contemplated at this stage that we would have an agreement that might outline certain responsibilities for each agency. So if council wants to give direction now to arrange an agreement as you've described, we can certainly do that. Otherwise, I think the next step for us would be to meet with the providers, gain a better understanding operationally of what provisions should apply to each agency, and that would be another opportunity for council to review and basically assess in terms of assigning what we might call a primary or secondary, or however we would structure that agreement, what's most appropriate. So you would have one opportunity to give us that direction now, and one when we come back with more detailed operations plan.
Councilmember, of course.
Sure. Just one more that I have for staff. I have some, obviously, for the operators and some comments, but Jay, you mentioned one way, you know, incorporating things that are in the well's current CUP, you know, to avoid some of the issues that happened at Cayancea and other locations into this agreement. And I saw in the staff report, there was a discussion of clients having to sign something, saying they won't hang around the area, although I don't know how that could possibly be required or monitored. And so I know we want, and I know well wants and we want to make sure this doesn't have the impacts to the neighbors that happened at Cayancea. So maybe what the police department or staff thinks we, we can do, or if we think having their client sign something is sufficient, because, you know, someone being a block away from the well, or people talking to each other, is totally legal and should be. So just trying to figure out how we address this, and what thoughts we have. So we make this successful, if we move forward with this from the start, and don't have the same problem in a year. So just any thoughts on that, or if we just need to do more on it? I just didn't feel from reading that, maybe we were done with that.
Yeah, you know, I do have just a couple thoughts on that. As we're sort of really deep diving into more programs going on, we did come across Laguna Beach, which allows individuals to use the facilities if they enroll. And so if they enroll, it, it kind of resolves some of the, the waiting outside the building to come in, because they already know if they're going to be granted access or not. And in addition to that, you know, the, the well has said, you know, they can't be held responsible for individuals once they're off the property and the facility is closed. So they do recognize that. And they've also said, you know, and how do you monitor a person waiting at the bus stop across the street that is on the airport property? If we write something in that says you are not to loiter on airport property? So there would have to be a carve-out to allow individuals to wait for a bus for a certain amount of time, I would think. And, you know, just in addition to that, it's, it's, be, this agreement that, that was brought up was something that the Well in the Desert proposed, and they said, well, if they violate it, they would be, they would lose their privileges of coming in, taking the showers, using the bathrooms, getting food. So they kind of had that as sort of the, their own measure to control individual behavior if they're associated with disturbances in the neighborhood.
Great, thanks. If we can maybe go back to, because I know I'd asked about Laguna Beach, and I appreciate you, we're trying to get information, it seems you have. So it'd be great if we could get maybe a more thorough report. It doesn't have to be right now, but maybe in writing, prior to anything coming back, because, so you said enrolled. So are they enrolled, they enroll to be able to use the center and agree to get services? Is that, and they get set times? Can you maybe explain a little bit about that? Because that was, I was interested in that kind of model, because I have heard things were working better in Laguna Beach, but I didn't know the details.
Yes.
It might be helpful for council.
For yourselves and city manager, I did do the presentation at PISA today, so that information.
I wasn't allowed on because of the ground act.
Okay. Yes. I spoke with staff, as, as did Captain Kovalov in Laguna Beach, and both of our contacts said that the enrollment process has greatly reduced the, the queuing in line around the center and on Highway 133 where this alternative sleeping facility is located. But one difference is, this is a sleeping facility. So this, as opposed to a, a drop-in center for the daytime, because if you're in the sleeping facility, you've got to place overnight. And so the similarity is, though, that the sleeping facility shuts down for certain hours of the day. So the individuals there are required to leave. And in fact, Laguna Beach provides transportation back to the downtown area, back to services that those individuals may need, and in fact, I think that's part of their settlement agreement, which allows them and the police to enforce anti-camping laws in Laguna Beach. So they do have that. That's probably a whole other conversation, but it is, you know, it may be specific to the settlement agreement that they have in the situation they're in, but that's in a nutshell.
Great. Thank you. It's an interesting idea to have some kind of enrollment, so I think that gives people accountability and, right, the goal is to help people get services to end their homelessness. So, you know, maybe incorporating something like that would make sense in this situation. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a related question if I can. So on page 10 of the staff report, it says permitted services. Trying to wait until the echo goes away. It says permitted services, the contractor shall be permitted to maintain a cooling center seasonal and drop-in center year-round with associated activities for homeless individuals, offer counseling, offer employment services, offer caseworker support, and maintain general administrative functions. No other services shall be offered. And so I was just wondering if that's the right scope of services? I think that mostly homelessness services is sort of moving away from just drop-in centers without, you know, referral to case management, which is included here, but referral to housing services, referring to, you know, behavioral health, or medical care, or addiction treatment, things like that. So I want to make sure that we can set people up for success. I know that when we funded, and then the county funded, just a overnight cooling center, it was like $30,000 a month, and we got very few people into housing, which is essentially enabling people and, and not helping them when they're coming to get help, to get into housing, right? That's a point of contact, that we can really help people exit homelessness and get the services that they need. So I'm concerned that by just limiting, you know, a cooling center or a drop-in center without the associated housing support services, which I know that Martha's does provide, and they operate a shelter, and they operate transitional housing, as well as respite care, they offer a ton of housing throughout the Coachella Valley. So anyway, that's my concern, is that we really are not just funding like a drop-in center, but actually funding something that's going to help people exit homelessness. And I want to make sure that's included in the list of permitted services. So would that be included, or do we need to change that?
I believe that can be included. It would be good to confirm with the service providers that they have the capacity and ability to provide that, and I believe they do. It's, it's an excellent point. There's several best practices we could ask to incorporate that were not part of the operation at Caye and Celia, which was, you know, under the conditional use permit, a drop-in center, a cooling center, warming center, and that was a primary function of it. But, Madam Mayor and council, you, one other item we are working on and have not lost sight of is your request for a draft of what a RFP for a navigation center might look like. So we are still planning to bring that back to you, and that, I think, would also include the more robust services that you're describing, Mayor.
Thank you. And I raise this because funding is getting really, really strict about outcomes. And so if we're funding city services, or we're funding nonprofits, and they're not tracking outcomes of how many people are housed and exiting homelessness, then, you know, we might not be as competitive to get that funding, and then we also might not be housing people and exiting people out of homelessness, which is our ultimate goal. And so I know with the Sea Bag Program, we're truly tracking, you know, month by month, how many people are exiting homelessness. We have that data for ROIDS, which was extremely low, and we have that data for the CB Housing First Program, which has been extremely high. So I'd like to be able to compare all of the homelessness services that we're providing and make sure that they're focused on outcomes. There's a humanitarian response. You know, it's, it's hot outside, we need people to be able to access food and water and showers. I know the county is working on 24-hour shelters and cooling centers that will offer housing and case management services to get people into housing, and I applaud them and ask that they, you know, do that right away if it's needed. And so I just want to make sure that this is, you know, a program that's, that's really helping people and not enabling people, you know, with, without getting help that they need. Any other questions for staff? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Jay, and Justin?
Thank you. Jay and Justin, I've got to go back to this annual budget that we've received. And I know you just got the budget from the well in the desert this morning. But I am incredibly struggling with understanding how Martha's can provide all of the various services that they are talking about providing for $221,908. And the well, to operate a drop in center, has a budget of $560,000. And some, a line item of $172,000 for client assistance. I don't know what that is. And I don't know how it relates to a drop in center.
Mayor Proten, I think that's very good feedback and would certainly help us in the next iteration of coming up with a more complete operations plan. I think our intent from here is to get direction from council, go back and work with these providers and get that kind of specific information for you. So that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for city staff? Councilmember Garner?
Yeah, I appreciate all the questions that have been asked already. And it does seem like there's just a lot of missing information and no real way to make a decision about things without it. So I appreciate, you know, staff bringing us back the answers to these questions. I'm not sure if council members want to talk to the service providers tonight or not, but it seems like these questions are more than what we are going to get answers for right now. So I just wanted to throw that out there based on what we're kind of hearing.
Thank you. So for city staff, in terms of process and getting direction that you need from this meeting and recommendations about moving forward, I see that this is a review of terms of the operations agreement. So what additional direction do you need from us? And how do you advise that council proceed in light of the fact that we've raised these questions and asked for additional information?
Well, Mayor, Council, you really kind of bring up a very fundamental question as to the preferred operator or the structure of the agreement. You know, we kind of move forward as if it was a partnership, kind of the same services being provided at the Caya Encelia site, bringing both operators over. But if you could, and I don't know if you're in a position to tonight, but, you know, the direction on how to structure the agreement would be very helpful. And then that would, I believe, kind of drive the services, the ability of the service providers to provide those services. It may even impact the layout of the site, you know, depending on what services are requested over there. So, you know, I just want to make sure we are moving forward on with the right assumptions in terms of what the project should be. So this has been very helpful because I am hearing adding in services that are more best practices as opposed to, you know, just a transfer of what, of the site of what's happening at Caya Encelia to the boxing clubs. That is appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Corey?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jay. I think, at least for me, I think that's a really important point, is really looking at outcomes and making sure we're giving people services with the goal of getting them, whether into drug or alcohol programs, into mental health programs, job training, to be able to exit homelessness, right? That is the ultimate goal. And, you know, it's something I think as we're working with the county, you know, on sort of that larger project that the mayor mentioned, you know, this really could work until that's up and running. But I think it really needs to have those outcomes. I think we need to make sure that the providers are putting people into the system or doing those pieces, are able to get, you know, county and state and federal grants that they would qualify for it. So getting, you know, as you speak to the providers after input tonight, really understanding how many staff, you know, stipends don't sound like people are actually being paid a regular salary. And I know some of them, you know, there are people who work for the well for years as full time staff. So are they getting benefits? Is there workers comp? Those kind of questions, I think, we just want to make sure we do this right and get this right. So those are the kind of, you know, input I think would be helpful. I see they have 4,200 for security. I'm assuming that's not for their staff who had to go through and get trained and certified for security. I assume that's for cameras or lighting. But a lot more detail on this would really be needed and to understand the stipends versus salary and the training that their staff has would be helpful for me as you move forward. Thank you.
I completely agree. So getting a detailed list of responsibilities of services from each provider and a very detailed budget, including, you know, a timeline, and then who will pay for what. So what the city is being asked to do, you know, what each provider will be able to provide. And then it sounds like staff needs revenue sources too to talk about operations and ensure, you know, ongoing success. And we want to set this up for success. And so we need those, that detailed information. Mayor Proten Middleton, I saw you had your hand raised.
Well, since April, when we first started this discussion, individuals have come forward to speak to members of council, myself included. And I know that this information has been partially been shared with, or has been shared with staff. But allegations have been made, allegations, not proof. But if true, the allegations regarding the operations at the well are extremely serious. And I believe that we're going to have to have a full, complete accounting and understanding of what monies they've received and how they've been spent and what the extent of operations are. And some of the information that we received this evening within this budget, our proposed budget, is concerning. So at this point, I, in the absence of a full accounting and a opportunity for staff to engage with the well regarding the allegations that have been leveled and receiving an adequate response, would not be able to vote to approve any contract that included the well in the desert.
Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't agree more with everything that has been said by the council members who spoke prior to me. So thank you everyone for those comments. I just, and also what staff, how staff summarized it just now. We really don't want to move the problem from location A to location B. We really want to see how we can improve that. And I think we really want some performance expectations to be set. We may want to look at some, you know, behavioral references or alcohol addiction or addiction references or whatnot. We need to set up some metrics on what success means. I would think one of those metrics would be what's the exit strategy? Getting people out of homelessness, into homes, kind of off addiction, whatever it may be. So I really want to thank my fellow council members for being on the same page as I am. Thank you.
Councilmember Wood?
Just want to add one more thing for staff, which I think you know, but also just for the public. You know, I think the governor proposed a record $12 billion with a real goal of ending family homelessness in five years. And the legislature, I think, approved over 8.5 billion for different types of programs. I think that's something there we'll be negotiating on. But the legislature's budget is, all the money is split between the counties, the continuum of care, which in our case is the county, and the 13 largest cities, as they have in the past. And so the county, you know, is expecting, if this comes through, to have a significant amount of money to really work on the kind of project. You mentioned, Mayor, and that Greg Rodriguez, who works for CBAG on homelessness and has the continuum of care and works for Supervisor Perez, has been working on with us. So we really have an opportunity to do a lot of the things we're asking for with housing involved in that kind of project. So there is not going to be money for cities other than the Big 13, other than through the counties. But, you know, we're fortunate in having Greg, who works on this, really working with us to make sure that we get our fair share of that funding, that the county spends it in Palm Springs and partners with us on it. And I think that's really feeling good. So I did want to let the public know that aside from this issue, there's also that bigger project that, there's been a good amount of work done by the county to do the kind of project I think we're talking about earlier, that kind of navigation center with permanent supportive housing and some transitional housing on one campus. And there's reason to be hopeful that should be moving quickly. So hopefully we'll be able to get an update from that as soon as the county's ready and add that as a presentation or an action item if, you know, we need to do that on an upcoming agenda. So I just want to flag that for staff and for the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I agree with those comments. And obviously, this is an extremely urgent issue. It's been a crisis, a statewide national crisis for years now with the housing crisis and everything else that we're facing and made a lot worse by the pandemic and economic inequality. So it's hard because we're trying to balance both the immediate need with short term, medium term, and then long term planning. And so I would like to see us issue a public process for ideas. I think Jay recommended moving forward with letters of interest or letters of intent to do a navigation center or a transitional housing with permanent housing project. And then we'll continue. I think a presentation would be great for the community because there are a lot of things that are happening on homelessness that people aren't aware of. And that would be important to talk about. I mean, we get dozens and dozens of emails about homelessness from the community every day or every week. It's impossible to respond to each and every one. And I think that the more we can do at the city council level, you know, obviously, our budget is limited. The county has a $6.5 billion annual budget. They are getting a lot of the state and federal funding to do homelessness. They have been working in partnership with us. It's really too bad that the Ivy Palm motel conversion couldn't move forward. But I'd like to see us continue to partner with the county and do a project like that, that, you know, will meet the urgent need. So, you know, that's all to say. I appreciate the council's direction and feedback on this. And so it sounds like we will ask staff to work on those questions and comments and coming up with an operating agreement to get more information and a full budget and a full scope of services, along with all the direction that council's given. Are there any other comments at this time?
Mayor, if I could just briefly, I think staff had certainly worked in the direction of trying to improve the kind of operations plan, strengthen the agreement we have with these partners, but really on the timeline that we expected to try to meet of kind of making this transition really in the next few weeks or month. With the kind of expanded review that we're talking about, the only thing I would anticipate is that we would likely have to consider some sort of temporary extension of the current CUP that was set to expire so that we can buy a little time to do a more exhaustive review, really meet with the partner agencies here and try to map out not only as robust a plan as they already had in mind, but probably more than that, which also opens the door to talking about resources, maybe engaging the county or other partners, considering creative sources, including, you know, what the city's role might be. So that's just a more elaborate endeavor. So anticipate we'd probably come back to talk about the CUP at the next meeting and have a little bit more of an extended timeline to do that.
So maybe we can talk about that. I don't know where council is on extending the existing CUP. I think we've heard that it's in a problematic location that needs to move because of the ensuing impacts and all the other issues that we've discussed. So is it possible to do a phased approach or to do an agreement with one service provider or an easier way to get there at first and then we can sort of expand into this whole project that we just don't have the budget, you know, or detail about?
Yeah, I think that's always possible. There's a lot of space between the track we were on to try to relocate services and make improvements. And something that was described a few minutes ago, really probably transitioning into what council intends for a more permanent solution, a navigation center or something like that. Perhaps what we can do is work over the next couple of weeks to see exactly what we can do and how we could scale this and maybe consider that phased approach where we're able to accomplish the essential components of an operations agreement sufficient to relocate the operation with some interim phase of review and added terms or something like that. It would probably just take Jay and I and some others putting our heads together to figure out what we can do.
So your intention is to enter into an operations agreement with both Martha's and well in the desert? How would it work to have a sort of operations agreement between three parties, the city and then two service providers?
Mayor, we would anticipate just having sections in that agreement that spell out who's responsible for what. So we understand there's, you know, potential to trip up and there's things that both may be responsible for, but we would have to do our best to identify what each party is responsible for.
And then if one party breaches the agreement, then would the whole agreement be invalid? Or how would that work?
I, we haven't gotten that far, but I would envision there would be built into the agreement some mutual indemnifications and protections for the two parties we are contracting with that may protect one if the other, say, violates or does not perform accordingly.
Thank you. I think I cut off the city manager if you had something to add.
Thank you, Mayor. I was only going to add that you're right, that that is odd, unconventional to have a three party agreement. It could manifest as two independent agreements, or it might represent a more traditional kind of primary and secondary service provider. I think at this point, what's probably important, now that we know that council really wants to kind of push this a little further than we had anticipated, is to go back with those partners and start to talk about how we can make this happen and bring you an idea that we think is reflective of this conversation. And by the end, that might look more like a primary and secondary provider or independent agreements, or if there's a way to preserve this partnership through some kind of third, three party mechanism while unconventional, if we can come up with the language to do that. And Jay and I have had some conversations with the city attorney's office along the way on how we can kind of do that mechanically. So we have a few ideas, but now I think we just need to consider this expanded direction and see if that changes those mechanisms or if we can preserve the track we're on.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you for that questioning, Madam Mayor. I think it was very important questioning. And thank you to staff for the answers on that. I certainly don't want to put the city in a position of having to mediate between two social service providers if we go into a three way contract. It seems like it's almost better to have a primary and a secondary where we have the primary that's responsible for the overall kind of operation and understanding the record keeping, the finances, all of that. And then the secondary may be contributing part of that program. It just seems that would be a cleaner way to go and keep us, because our staff resources on this are limited. It consumes an enormous amount of our time. And if we can limit that amount of time and how we structure this operational contract, I think it would be important to consider. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? So for city staff, it's June 10th, our next So for city staff, it's June 10th, our next council meeting, trying to look at my calendar here, is June 24th. The CUP goes to June 30th. Is that right? So do you think, do you advise that we extend the CUP at this time for a short period of time or at least give you authority to do so?
We would certainly need that at this point, at least for some temporary period. And, and I think we could bring you that as part of the, the next council meeting to do that formally unless it can be done informally to give staff direction and authority to do that.
Okay. So that's okay to bring back to the next council meeting then? Or can we do it here? Mayor Proton?
I would prefer to have it come back at the next council meeting. As I've expressed earlier, I have very serious concerns about our, our relationship with the well.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me, Mayor Proton. Sorry. It's been a long item and a long evening, so thank you for those comments. Okay, so then we will go ahead and plan on bringing this back to a date certain of June 24th, which is the next council meeting. Not that item, but the short extension of the CUP to address this plan. Councilmember Corr.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. And I think, I think city manager mentioned, you know, working with the county on this piece because what we don't want is a gap where there's no one for people to be. And so if there is something open where, you know, clients can go, that, you know, will impact how we move forward. So hopefully we'll know, we should know that soon. I know they're working really hard to get that done. So hopefully we'll know that before the 20, you know, 4th as well. Thank you.
Be great. Thank you. I do think we need the county's input on any plan that we're working on, especially this, as you just noted, they, they hold most of the money on homelessness and we need them to, to fund our projects. Okay, so city staff, do you need any other direction before we end this item?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jay, for standing up there for a long time with us. Okay, so the next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. City clerk, if you could please begin contacting speakers by telephone.
Christina Kelso, you're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, good evening. Basically, I would like to promote unity in Palm Springs by asking you to, like reconsider what you're doing with the mural on, I always get this mixed up, so forgive me, but Palm Canyon, the one with, the infamous one that says, "I can't breathe." You've allowed that so-called art to cast a spell. It is a spell. "I can't breathe" is a mantra. It's very powerful and it's very, you know, poisonous to all of us because guess what? If you can't breathe, you are no longer alive. When there's no breath, no life. It's that simple. Everyone I've asked about how they feel about this mural, you know, laughs because there should be a rap sheet. Maybe you were unaware of George Floyd's mural or George Floyd's record, but it's ridiculous. It's not who Palm Springs is at all. We don't promote criminals. I don't even think he's really dead. I really don't. I think the whole thing was a false flag, so you look even more ridiculous. It's a very stupid mural. I understand it's on particle board and I strongly urge you to have it removed and frankly disposed of. I can't imagine you're, someone's going to want to hang on to that. So, um, yeah, like get rid of it. Nobody likes it. You have zero public support. And "I can't breathe" is just toxic. I mean, I don't know, do you want like a big cemetery to be Palm Springs? I haven't met any locals nor tourists who agree with this message. It's irresponsible. I know it's fast-tracked. Honestly, please get rid of it.
Thank you. Your comments are over. Thank you.
Thanks.
You're live with the Palm Springs City Council and you have two minutes to provide your comments. And if you could please begin by stating your name. Thank you.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Mark Davis, full-time resident of Palm Springs, and I wanted to comment on the placement of Maryland, which quite honestly, I've commented at every council meeting since November. But realizing that it is actually going up at the moment, but there's still a lawsuit against it, so it's clear that there are still many people who are unhappy with this positioning of Palm, of Maryland on museum way. It was a bad decision. The Desert Sun wrote three editorials that it was a bad decision. It has caused such a rift, such dissension in Palm Springs and the community, and it was so not necessary. Maryland for five years had a place in the park. Five years ago, we litigated this whether people liked it or whether people did not like it. But a happy compromise was made for Maryland to go into the park. And then suddenly at one council meeting in November, with very little notice and as the Desert Sun editorial said, quite questionable decision-making, the council voted to put it in the middle of museum way. So my question is, it's there, it's going up, the lawsuit may or may not stop it, but why hasn't it gone through engineering? Why hasn't it gone through earthquake mitigation? It is a 34,000-pound, 26-foot-tall aluminum metal sculpt, uh, sculpt, uh, statue that will be teetering on hills in earthquake territory. It did not go through any commission, it did not go through any planning, it did not go through the building, it did not go through HSPB. It went through nothing. And it's questionable why it happened this way. So those are the points that I want to make. It's extraordinarily disappointing, even if it's up for one year. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that does conclude public comment. I attempted to contact David Bell twice, but no answer. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. So the next item is 5A, discussion of the Parklet Program. Can we have a staff report, please?
Madam Mayor and members of council, the city of Palm Springs has allowed parklets as part of the measures under the pandemic. With the potential lifting of emergency measures on June the 15th, staff is seeking direction from the city council in terms of where we go with the parklet program. One of the things I need to start with is to just clarify exactly what parklets are. From the public comment earlier, there is some confusion about what we call a parklet versus standard outdoor dining. In terms of a parklet, a parklet is a commercial or public use located in an on-street parking space. And so that is what a parklet is under our program. Things that are confused as parklets, outdoor dining on public sidewalks, outdoor dining on private property or in private parking lots. Those uses are addressed under our zoning code and consequently are not parklets, nor are they part of our parklet program. I'm going to spend most of the discussion this evening on our parklet program. I do have a couple of comments about outdoor dining. We have allowed certain waivers for outdoor dining that with the end of the emergency measures, we will probably want to end those waivers as well. But again, I'm going to spend most of the time discussing the parklet program. In your staff report, I have some background on the parklet program as I've already indicated. It was our response to the restrictions on indoor dining. We issued temporary land use permits for the parklets. As part of those approvals, what we did was we set those to expire in conjunction with the lifting of emergency orders. There's some work at the state level that we should take under consideration. There is a Senate bill which would allow the extension of the liquor catering permits that have allowed liquor to be served in the parklet areas. And as I've mentioned, there is also potential, the lifting of the emergency orders and restrictions on indoor uses which would allow restaurants and bars to go back to normal operations, normal indoor operations. So based on those factors, we do need your direction on parklets. I've got a number of items for discussion and, Madam Mayor, with your agreement, what I would like to do is to discuss these points one by one, get your input on them before I move on to the next point, just to give a format for our discussion and to be able to do this in an orderly fashion. And so these are the bullet points that I'd like to address. Some of them are interrelated and I'll bring those points up as we discuss them. With that, I'll go ahead and get started on the individual discussion points. The first is really about the continuation or extension of our existing parklet program. What staff would recommend to you is to allow all existing permities for parklets to continue that use for an additional 12 months. That mirrors the 365-day extension in the Senate bill that's under proposal right now and feel that that would be an appropriate time period. However, if you feel that either a shorter period or a longer period would be appropriate, we would certainly look for your direction on that. One of the other things that we would suggest is to allow permanent parklets for either commercial uses or a public use on a permanent basis, but subject to the approval of a new application and also conformance to design standards that I'm going to talk about shortly. But as for the existing permities, we would like to allow those to continue for a time period of 12 months. And with that, Madam Mayor, are there any comments from council on this point, the extension of the parklet program?
Councilmember Corr.
Wait, I lost your slide, but I, I think, I remember my comments tied to your questions. So on the first one, you said 12 months, but also that would be consistent with the Senate Bill 314. My understanding of the Senate bill, Flynn, is that it will be 12 months after the state lifts their emergency orders, which the governor said is probably months away. So are we talking 12 months from when we vote or, or to stay consistent with that Senate bill? Just so we know what we're talking about. I'm fine either way.
Staff's recommendation is for 12 months from your direction. If you'd like to make that consistent with the Senate bill in terms of how that's tracking, that would be fine too, but our recommendation is to go 12 months essentially from today.
Okay. And the other que, I think item was for new applications, I think on the slide, let's just stay with the temporary and not the permanent issue because I think we, my view is we need more time to talk permanent and get a lot more input before we talk about permanent at all. But I think for new applications to have design standards, I also think we need existing ones to have design standards. I think some of them have done a really exemplary job in design and others have done nothing much more than the K rails we've provided. And as we've heard in testimony, a lot of them block other businesses, they block views of other businesses, walking retail in my district, there was almost no support for continuing these at all. And I think a lot of that is because of they block retail. So I would like to see when we get to design standards, that we look, if we're going to keep these for 12 months or potentially 18 months, I'd like to see design standards for all of them move forward. And obviously those can't be in place immediately, but I, I think we really need to be putting in design standards if we're going to keep them this long as we, and I think we're more likely to think about doing it permanently, and I think residents will be more supportive of doing it permanently if we have design standards and they have a sense that this can really look attractive and work well for all of our businesses. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr, for your comments. I would agree with those comments, so I won't repeat them. But then I just have a kind of a clarifying question here. You're breaking, there's a lot of stuff to discuss tonight under this item, a lot of facets to parklets and outdoor dining, but you're asking at this point just about parklets, not about outdoor dining that might be in a parking lot or some other area besides the public right of way. Is that correct?
That is correct. Only parklets for right now.
Okay. And so parklets, just to reiterate what you said, is about really that kind of dining that takes place in public ground, like in the parking stalls or outside in front of the business that's not on their private property?
Just the dining in the parking spaces on the street.
Parking spaces on the street, okay. So it's about using those parking spaces on the street, but those would be, I guess my propensity would be to use those parking spaces on the street that are directly in front of the business only. And as Councilmember Corr said, that they really need to be designed in such a way that they don't block adjacent businesses, the signage for adjacent businesses or access to adjacent businesses. And we'll get into design standards later, but I think, I think if they're designed correctly, an outdoor parklet can have an advantage to the community and this gives us 12 months to try them out again on maybe a higher standard than what we did when we initially put them up, which was in a reaction to COVID and a reaction to businesses not having any indoor dining whatsoever. So those are my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Proton. You're muted. Mayor Proton.
I try not to do that. I agree with the comments that have been made earlier and I'm supportive of the concept of parklets and I want to give staff the time to, to work on this and get it right for us. I think it's critical though that we, if not immediately, very, very promptly make sure that we do not have any retail establishments that are blocked by a parklet for a restaurant or some other establishment that's not directly in front of, of their store. That's something that's just not fair. And we need to correct that without delay. And it would seem that that's something that we should be able to correct very quickly. I, I do believe if we're going to go another year out, that we need to have standards regarding how the parklets are going to look. They need to be consistent and they need to be something that are consistent with the kind of architecture values that we associate with Palm Springs. What was up so far was clearly everybody trying to move very, very quickly. I also believe that if we are going to make public space available for commercial use, there needs to be a charge for that, for that space. I, I don't, I'm not looking for the state to make enormous sums of money off of this by any stretch, but it needs to be something that responsibly assesses a charge for the use of public space so that individuals in business do the kind of thing that business people do absolutely every day, which is make a determination as to whether or not to make an investment in something because they believe they're going to get a return on investment. And the only way to make sure that that happens with a parklet is you got to charge for it. You can't just give it away. Lastly, it's not clear to me as to Lastly, it's not clear to me as to whether or not we are going to reopen arenas there at Palm Canyon, but I've been on that corner a few times, and Mr. Keller makes a very good comment that it is safer for pedestrians with lack of cars going in and out of that intersection. And I'd like to see staff review with the two vendors, but also review with all of the business owners and operators on arenas to make sure that we are making a decision that works best for everyone. And I don't know what that decision is right now, but I'm not ready to, to say that we need to abandon what we have.
Okay. And we will talk about fees and street reopening as part of the bullet points that are coming up. Thank you. Any other comments?
I just have a question or two. So we got some public comment about sort of the need and the demand for parklets and additional outdoor dining spaces. So, you know, some commenter said some of these are being used for storage, you know, some talked about being empty most of the time. Obviously, it varies place to place. So I'm just wondering if staff has information about the data, about need or demand, or if we could sort of collect that as we go to assess, you know, to make sure that these are used and that they're not vacant.
As part of the, one of the upcoming discussion points, we are going to talk about use of parklets and the frequency of use. We would propose that there be a minimum number of times that the parklet is used during the week. Unfortunately, I don't have data in front of me in terms of what the existing parklets, how often they're used right now. But as you've heard from the public comment, as we all have, there is a concern about the parklets when they're empty. So that's one of the reasons why we want to talk about, as one of the discussion points, the frequency of use.
Thank you. I think that solves that problem. So I agree with all the council comments so far on this point.
Okay. With that, let me go to the next discussion point, which is parklet design standards. As has been identified, we did put this program together rather quickly. We didn't, as staff, have the ability to really have any type of a design review process for the parklets or come up with adopted design standards. So if we move forward with any type of a permanent program, what we would want to do is develop design standards, and I'd recommend that we do that in conjunction with representatives of the Architectural Review Committee as well as stakeholders. I think it'd be helpful to have one of the business owners who's actually developed a parklet to be on that subcommittee to develop design standards, as well as represent, representatives of the merchants, so that we have opinions from all groups who may be impacted by the parklets. I would say that if we have new parklets going forward, that they would need to conform to the approved design standards that we develop. For existing parklets, as you've all expressed, there are concerns about the appearance and blocking other businesses. What I'd recommend is that we put together some adapted design standards, understanding that this would apply to parklets that are already developed, so trying to address the issues such as the shade structures that block businesses and the appearance of the K rails or the concrete barriers and some other minor things such as signage, et cetera. So if we do extend the program, then we would have the existing parklets conform to some limited set of design standards. And then if we do a permanent program, we would develop permanent design standards with the Architectural Review Committee and stakeholders. So your input on those points, please.
Councilmember Garner. I'll start, so we're not always the same people. You know, I like this idea in terms of bringing members of Architectural Review in. I think they'll be in a better place to work with staff to develop what exactly those designs look like. I think otherwise, you know, the five of us will get very much into the weeds, and I don't think that's a good use of our time. One recommendation that I have is that we don't make the design standards overly burdensome. I think what we've seen downtown is a huge range of parklets, and some are gorgeous. And I know that the owners of Tequila wrote to us, and they quoted how much they spent on it, and it was quite a bit of money. And I think that there's probably a happy medium between what they're doing and what some of others are doing. So I don't, I don't want it to be so burdensome that only the most lucrative businesses can have them. But I do, I mean, I do look forward to some consistency in design because right now we do look a little bit like a summer camp with everyone's forks being put up.
I agree. I might ask, it's, you sound like you're going to get broad stakeholder participation, but we might want to think through instead of having just one representative from restaurants, you know, representing smaller restaurants, larger restaurants, sort of the gamut so that, you know, you're not just getting one or two opinions about, about those. And then my main question is about K rails and, you know, because we've gotten feedback that the K rails are just ugly and it's very difficult to make them attractive. So I mean, I agree, aesthetics is not our expertise. I think ARC is much better to handle that. So maybe Flynn's answer will just be ARC will come up with really good design standards with stakeholder input, making sure that they're affordable and doable and practical and not too burdensome, like Councilmember Garner said. So I think I answered my question, Flynn. I think that I support all of staff's recommendations. Other council member comments? Councilmember Woods.
I just want to clarify that, you know, there isn't, it sounded like staff was saying that there's going to be these things called adaptive design standards. I don't agree with that. And then there'd be permanent design standards. I don't agree with that either. You know, we're, we're not looking at a permanent thing. We're looking at something at this point, we're discussing 12 months. We need design standards for those 12 months is what we need. Those are what need to be put in. We don't need to try and adapt something. We just need to come up with design standards that work. I think we'll probably lose some along the way, but we'll actually improve some along the way as well.
So for the non-planning planners in their room, could you, Flynn, describe for us the difference between adaptive standards and permanent standards and what you might propose to address that concern?
So what the intention was there is with the existing parklets that have already been constructed, we need to take that into consideration in terms of design standards. So working with the existing parklets, how can we make them uniform? And how can we address the immediate concerns of both appearance and blocking businesses? Looking more long-term, I think what we would want to do is have more comprehensive design standards and a design review process. And so that is what I was proposing in terms of the difference between more short-term or adapted design standards versus the long-term program. What I'm hearing from council is that you want to just work with the existing parklets that we have for now and to defer the discussion about a permanent parklet program until later. So with that, what I would recommend that we do is, is work on the design standards for the existing parklets, again, to try and make those more uniform and address the immediate concerns. So that is what I'm hearing from council, if that's correct.
Thank you, Mayor. I think two, two points on that. So one is, obviously, we may still get some new requests for parklets, so they should be the same as the standards or, you know, obviously, we want to be, standards to be flexible for people who have done things other than just the tables out and K rails. And I don't think they all need to be uniform. I think, you know, we have some really interesting ones that really fit the brand of the restaurant that look great. So I just want to be sure, when you're saying uniform, that that's not what I'm intending, but I may be hearing the word uniform differently than you mean it. But, you know, you look at Tequila or Trio, they're very, very different, but they fit their brands, you know, or Los Consoles, the original Los Consoles with a mural. So I wouldn't want all those to say we want all the K rails to be painted a single color. I think we want to be flexible in design in that that's what makes it interesting. Does that make sense, Flynn?
Yes. There's kind of a fine line between interesting, creative, and summer camp, I think is the term that I heard used earlier. So we want to--
We want them to look good.
Yeah, we want it to look good. We want it to reflect the Palm Springs brand while allowing a degree of creativity. So that's what I'm hearing from council.
Uniformly look good, exactly. And then just, you know, I think new ones and existing ones, you know, because we will get new ones, there are new businesses coming in and, you know, so keeping that just, so it's not just existing, just in, just for the wording. I'm sure you're intending that, but I just wanted to point it out. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Woods.
You know, we've gotten a lot of correspondence on this from both residents and business owners, retail as well as restaurant. And I think, and I think the term that people have used is kind of European style. And a European style means when you walk down the street, you have an interaction with the diner that's next to you or whatever, and it's at kind of that, that level. And the same thing with the street, there's an interaction between the diner and the street. And some of the examples that you pointed out earlier that has been pointed out, such as Workshop Kitchen or Tequila or Black Book, has that beautiful design flow between the public right of way and the parklet that makes it feel kind of all integrated. What I'm hearing doesn't work is when you close them off with sun sails or whatever, make them like a room where there's no real interaction. So I would just say, without getting in the weeds, as Councilmember Gardner pointed out, I just, the general philosophy should be one where there really is this interaction and not this closing off in a separate room in the public right of way, that it really should be an open kind of flowing movement of tables and umbrellas and activity that lasts throughout the afternoon and evening.
Well said, Councilmember Woods. I'm glad you're on city council. I cannot say that that way. So great description. Other comments? So we agree with staff recommendations, including the changes that were just discussed.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's go ahead and move on to the next discussion point. So the next issue is relative to use. In terms of parklets, we have limited them currently to restaurants. I would also suggest that we allow public amenities, public use. If you go back to the history of parklets, San Francisco was one of the first cities to develop a parklet program in the early 2000s. They used theirs back then primarily to expand the public realm in terms of the sidewalk with seating or other public amenities. So what I'd recommend is that we limit it to restaurants, and if anyone chooses to do public amenities, we would allow that. In terms of retail, it's become a little bit more problematic. We've had several discussions about that. What we would recommend, instead of allowing retail use in the parklets, is to amend our outdoor display ordinance to make that more uniform, and that's one of the items that we have tentatively scheduled for your June 24 city council meeting. That was also on the agenda at the Business Retention Subcommittee meeting earlier this week with a discussion about how that ordinance might come forward. So our recommendation is to restrict the use of the parklets to either restaurant or some type of public amenity. The other discussion point is relative to how often the parklets are used. One of the things that we might suggest is that for the parklet use for restaurants, that a minimum of two meals per day or two service periods per day, six days per week. That's just a suggestion. I'd like to get your input on that, if that's something that's reasonable in terms of a minimum amount of use. As you've heard from the public comment, there is a concern about when parklets are empty, the appearance that that gives to the street. So I'd like to get your feedback in terms of that suggestion as well. Madam Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Flynn, if you could, or IT, keep the slide up. I think that's more useful for us, even though the public can't see us that way. Is there feedback from council members on parklet use? Councilmember Woods, and then Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have, you know, this slide is a little mashup of a few things. When it's a public amenity along with a restaurant, and, you know, we have to discuss later where bars fit into this, if bars are actually going to be able to have catering permits to serve into the public right of way. We don't know that answer yet. Or I don't think so. Maybe the city attorney's got that, but we'll get to that later. But we really don't want empty parklets or parklets that are used as storage areas. So two servings per day is one thing, but the other thing is on their days that they're closed, you know, I don't know if they can become a public amenity or not, where people can just, you know, sit down on their chairs and whatnot. There's no one there to maintain them, so they lock them up at night. So I'm not clear how public amenity might work in this situation. I don't know if staff has a thought on that or what.
The thought on public amenity use is looking more at the San Francisco model, where you have seating that's open to everyone rather than being a private restaurant that offers its seating up. What we might do is perhaps exclude that from this discussion, Councilmember Woods, and just focus on the restaurants for now, since we don't have any public parklets at this point in time, they're all commercial use.
Thank you.
Councilmember Corr. It feels repetitive calling on you all twice, so go ahead.
I think that, that makes sense. I, you know, depending on what we do long-term, having lived in San Francisco during that period, you know, those were really great for people to grab coffee or takeout or just read the paper. It really activated the streets, as Councilmember Woods is always so good about describing from his planning years and, you know, but that's different than what was done for the emergency and what the state's going to probably allow to continue. We're actually giving public right of way the complete control to a commercial business, right, which they didn't do. I mean, they probably did during the pandemic. So I think that sort of fits with what we want to do long-term. So I think that makes sense as far as having a minimum of two meals per day, six days a week, and maybe a certain number, or a certain number of hours a day, you know. But right now, you know, there are days you go down there and most of them are being used during the day. And it doesn't look good. It becomes unattractive for people, and I think it impacts the retail in places where we have the most parklets. So I'm open to what you think is the right amount and hearing from council, but I do think they need to be utilized more than some are being utilized now, absolutely.
Mayor Proten.
I agree. I think we should have rules that restrict the ability of the parklets to be used for storage or for some other kind of use that is not actually serving customers. I'm not sure whether two meals a day is the right number or something else. I just don't have the background to be able to make that kind of judgment. But I'll come back to the fee issue. If the market, if we set a price for this that is, is responsible, the business owners are not going to take on more space than they know that they can profitably use. And I'm, I'm not sure what that, that fee needs to be, but it, it should be one that identifies for a business owner that I'm going to take on this space because I know I can make profit with it and, and use it.
So for the, what, where did we land on the public amenities? Should we include that? I mean, I agree that we'd like to see public amenities, parklet, something like, you know, Great Development has those tables downtown, and people frequently use those, and it's a really nice use of space and, you know, good sort of gathering area for communities. So is, Flynn, what's your recommendation, hearing from council members about including public amenities? Because it sounds like that's what we would like to see. Because it sounds like that's what we would like to see parklets be used for as well.
Based on the comments that we've received, I think, let's do this. Let's save public-use parklets for a permanent program that we discuss down the road. We can still keep that option available, but let's address the immediate need right now, which is really the commercial-use restaurants, and still have the option of doing public-use parklets later on, along with some design standards and a permanent program.
But if we're thinking that people might apply for new ones, wouldn't we want to build in the parklet we might also want to see? I see Councilmember Forrest has a comment or question on this.
Yeah, I mean, I like the public, you know, use ones. I think having more parklets right now, if we're going to continue these temporarily, might be tough. But I think, you know, if businesses, if we could do it, I think Councilmember Woods, you raised this, where when they're not open, tables and chairs are left out for public use, and how we dealt with liability issues, I mean, there are a whole bunch of issues, that would be a great thing, because it would keep them active and not empty, you know, when the business is closed. And that's one of the problems now, right, when you go down, you know, on a Monday or Tuesday, and you see all these empty, sometimes, storage, you know, things in the middle of the street. So, if we can incorporate them in that way temporarily, I think that would be great. So maybe that addresses your concern, Mayor, and, yeah. I wouldn't want to foreclose it, for sure.
Right.
If there's a way we could do it that would work with those businesses that have them.
Okay.
Is that possible, Flynn?
Yeah, yeah, I think we can develop something.
Thank you. As to the requirement of these and meal service, I would just ask that we work with restaurants, who are experts about this, and it's hard for me to say right now, not hearing from them, what is a, you know, usable amount. So I like the idea of opening it to the public, you know, if, when it's not being used, dealing with all those related issues. But maybe you could bring that to the stakeholder group as well.
Okay. Perfect.
Or do you need authority for that now?
No, I think it would probably be helpful to consult with the restaurant owners. They will probably be able to give us some good direction in terms of how often that should be used. I like the suggestion that we use hours rather than a number of meals, but again, consulting with our stakeholders would be a good thing to do here.
Yep, I agree with hours versus meals. Go ahead, Councilmember Forrest.
Yeah, and the other thing I would just add is, especially, you know, in the summer, or, you know, sometimes I've gone down and there are lots of people, you know, on the sidewalk, but not necessarily in the parklet part. And sometimes there aren't even tables in the parklet part that, if they have parklets, that they have to have tables and chairs there when they're open. Even if it's hot and no one's going to sit there, it just, so it looks better. Because otherwise, they're just, you know, they could sit empty for months. And I don't think that's a good thing.
I agree. It looks, it looks bad, yeah, it looks like that. Any other comments? I don't see any. Flynn?
Okay, let's go ahead and go on to the next one. In terms of parklet area and locations, first of all, talking about where they're permitted relative to the business, what I would recommend that we do is we limit the parklet area to basically the width of the storefront, so that you're able to have a parklet in front of your store. In certain cases, we've allowed them to encroach one way or the other. I think moving forward for the next 12 months, what we need to do is to cut those back to just the width of the storefront. Another concern that has been raised is relative to businesses that are on corners, where they've occupied both street fronts. What staff might recommend is where you have a corner business, limit them to one of the street frontages, so that way we preserve some of the on-street parking. And then finally, looking more generally in terms of the areas where parklets may be allowed, and this is kind of, again, taking the longer approach, if we allow these on a permanent basis, what we've seen from the parklet applications is that they've primarily been limited to the Palm Canyon, Indian Canyon, and Arenas corridors. And that's not to say that they might not be appropriate in other areas, we just haven't seen the applications come in. So for example, in the Sunny Dunes area, you've got a bit of a pedestrian district there. As we look at South Palm Canyon, at the Curve, there's a number of restaurants down there with immediately adjacent on-street parking spaces. So again, looking further out in terms of the program, we might look at other areas. The key thing is that the parklet program needs to address situations where there aren't issues from traffic, and so we would look at streets where the speed is 35 miles per hour or less, and where there's direct access from the business to the public sidewalk and the parklet. So those are kind of things in terms of globally across the city where we would allow parklets. But in terms of the immediate limiting the parklet area to just the width of the storefront. So I'd like to get your comments on those items.
Comments from councilmembers? Mayor Protem.
I very strongly support limiting them to 35 miles per hour zones and below. I think we need to continue to be real careful when it comes to public safety, and the Curve area is one I'm very familiar with, that's my district, and that's, there are some blind spots, and there are some really heavy speeds that are encountered in that area that, the speed limit may be 35, but that's not what's typically you see cars driving.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, I agree. So Flynn, do you have a sense of where that would apply then, and then which business districts might be excluded from that? I mean, Palm Canyon, I think you noted, at some portions is over 35 miles per hour, right?
That's correct, especially as you look at North Palm Canyon, that's where you have the higher speeds. There are going to be some areas of the city where it's just not appropriate. So for example, Sunrise Parkway, Ramon, the speeds are too high, and you don't really have pedestrian areas where the business is directly on the sidewalk. There's very limited opportunities in those areas. And so what I'd recommend, as we look at parklets globally, is number one, speed limit, and then number two, where you have a pedestrian area. What we have been doing is consulting with our engineering department for the applications that we've approved to date, and we would continue doing that in the future in terms of looking at safety, pedestrian safety, and impacts from vehicles.
I do think, you know, we always talk about ensuring fairness and equity through business corridors throughout the city. And wait until the echo is gone. So I would just be thoughtful, you know, we want to make, we do, I think, want to incentivize where it's safe, you know, frontage, and, you know, involvement from the street and the businesses, and do that in a fair way. So I think that proposal is fair. I do think we want to allow parklets more, and look at them more globally, and then also treat, you know, other business corridors similarly to downtown, the downtown corridor in business district. Other comments? We agree with staff's recommendation? Yes.
With that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next discussion point. This is relative to street closures and lane reductions. As you're aware, we reduced the number of lanes on Palm Canyon last year from three lanes of traffic to two lanes of traffic in the area between Takwitz and Baristo. In reviewing our traffic figures from the engineering division relative to that reduction, they haven't seen any major impacts to traffic flow with that reduction. And so staff would recommend that we continue to keep that in place, as is currently instituted. Secondly, in looking at where we have closed Arenas Road, we do see some impacts to the east-west flow of traffic. You've had testimony this evening, and I've also heard comments from council that you may be okay with leaving Arenas closed. I just want you to be aware that there have been certain impacts. I don't think that they've been severe enough to warrant the, you know, immediate reopening of Arenas, but certainly that's something that we would like to look at, so I'd like to get your opinion on that. There have been discussions among the business owners where they'd like to investigate the possibility of perhaps doing street closures in other areas. What I'd recommend is that we don't address that at this point in time, but rather, as the merchants may get together and may want to consider that at some point in the future, we could look at that. So for right now, I think there's really two discussion points. Number one is to maintain the lane reduction on Palm Canyon from three lanes to two lanes in the area where it is currently. And then second, get feedback from city council on reopening Arenas Road. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn that back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garner, and then Councilmember Forrest.
Thank you. In terms of Arenas, I'm in favor of reopening it, but, you know, happy to hear from the business owners to really determine what's working. I will say, if it is going to remain closed, some more signage would be helpful. I know that I have inadvertently turned down, even though I know it's closed, it's just really easy when you're making a left to think that it's still open because of, there's no signage there. So, and then of course, it's really hard to do a turn and get back. So if we, if we are going to keep it closed, if we can just do something to kind of help with that, I think that would be appropriate. In general, though, I'm, I prefer to keep the streets open as much as possible.
Councilmember Forrest.
Great, thanks. So let me start with that one on Arenas. I agree with Councilmember Garner. Given, we're not going to allow businesses to be on, you know, two sides if they're on a corner, so we have some parking to keep that closed, I mean, it will help one business, but they can still have a parklet on Arenas without the road being closed. And I did meet with businesses on both sides, on Arenas east of Indian, but also west of Palm Canyon, who really feel having a street closed is hurting their businesses. And people aren't driving by their businesses and seeing them, and they very much want that opened. I know we never did a process, I know we don't have to do a public hearing for a temporary street closure, we learned that, but I don't think we ever even did it, I don't think we did an administrative process or council ever approve closing Arenas, so we'd need to do that, I believe, so the attorney can answer that, if we want to keep it closed. And, you know, having some flexibility for, if there is a business who doesn't have street frontage, you know, to have parklets, and what we might be able to do to help them is something we can think about. Because obviously, we want equity, and we want to help all our businesses. As far as the lane closure, since I drive down Palm Canyon a lot, it does create some traffic, I'm okay with that. To me, the problem that we just need to try and figure out on that is, you know, we're giving just a handful of businesses, restaurants, a sidewalk, a parking spot, and a lane of traffic. And we have heard from some that some, those are some of our bigger restaurants, who then get filled and hurt our smaller restaurants. And it's very unequal by doing that. It's one thing just to get people part of the sidewalk in a parking spot, but a lane of traffic really benefits a handful of restaurants. And for the businesses on that stretch, and there are three or four, I think, since we overlap there, Councilmember Middleton, you've talked to some of them as well, when you have the sidewalk, a parking spot, and then a lane of traffic, no one sees those businesses other than the restaurants. And they feel they're really hurting, and they're not sure they're going to survive because of it. So, I don't know if we have tax records to know if they're faring worse than other businesses, but I think we just need to get more input on keeping that lane closed and the impact it has on other businesses. It definitely helps those four and five, six restaurants that benefit from that section, but what is its impact on other restaurants and on the retail? Because the retail is not seen on that block at all. And I'm just, I don't want to hurt, I want to help everyone, or at least be neutral. I don't want to hurt businesses when we do things like this, because that's not fair. And retail really has not gotten the benefits restaurants have, and it's different, right? Having lots of outdoor merchandise is different than outdoor dining. And I like the outdoor dining a lot, but we really, I don't know what the answer to that, Flynn, is, but I'm concerned about the impact that's having on retail. And there's no parking in that, that whole block, so people really, I think those retail folks are, you can, you can tell in their voices when you meet with them how much this is really troubling them, and they don't want to hurt the restaurants, but having no parking for that long stretch, and, you know, seats three, you know, rows out, I'm really concerned about the impact for the retail. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with what my colleagues have said. I do, I do see more pedestrians out with Arenas closed at that one location, but I think it's something that we need to study. What I would like to see us do is spend a little more time making sure that we've given every business owner an opportunity to weigh in. Sometimes we, we hear from, from some of the louder voices, and we need to hear from everyone, and maybe just a simple survey that gets mailed out to, to folks or emailed to them in some fashion would go a long way. All of that said, we do need to protect our retail stores as well as our restaurants, and I'll come back to something I said earlier, it's just not fair to block anybody else's business.
Councilmember Woods, and then Councilmember Forrest.
Great, thank you. I think we need, you know, we have three lanes of traffic going down Palm Canyon that we really don't need for three lanes of traffic. So the question really comes is, what, how do we do it? And unfortunate, the fortunate thing is, we do Village Fest, which uses it, we have parades, which use it, we have all of these other events that really define us, that that public right-of-way becomes kind of public space that's very pedestrian during these kind of special occasions. With that being said, you know, closing a lane of traffic currently, I don't think is a traffic problem like staff has said that it's not. I agree with staff, but when it actually closes, it's not very, what do I, it's not very visually friendly, right? When you, when you narrow down, you almost hit the barricade before you realize that it becomes closed. One of the problems that I see with what was rented, which is Lulu's, and Las Consuelas, and Pomfreet, and in the Village Pub, is, is that that long stretch there is that people have been, and elsewhere as well, they've been allowed to build up on top of the K-rails, which blocks visibility. It makes it a canyon when you drive down the boulevard, and I don't think that's what we want. We don't want that canyonization. And it's quite different than when you drive by some of the other ones in town, such as what we mentioned earlier, Tequila, or some of the other ones. So I think, I think it's a two-part question, is how do we best use our right-of-way? And if restaurants use it, how do we make sure it doesn't block businesses? And that's got to be through design. And when a business is between two of them, the design becomes critical, critically important. So whether we just say, don't use the lane of traffic, or we come up with really kind of site-specific design standards, I'm not sure which way is best to go.
I just want to raise, I did speak with Nona Watson, the head of the chamber, who's willing to send out, and, you know, maybe we work with the chamber, on really doing a survey of the places where there are parklets. So we're getting input from all the businesses, whether we mail them, you know, email, you know, do some door-to-door walking, you know, to make sure the merchants in those areas are getting them, especially for some of these specific questions, and I'm happy to do that. Obviously, I have one side of downtown, and I'm... Obviously, I have one side of downtown and, you know, happy to do that. But that's where, you know, those main issues are, is our downtown in Arenas. We're not really having that issue uptown in a major way. There are some, but not where it's blocking retail. And really make sure we're getting that input. Because I agree, a lot of businesses, you know, they're struggling and, you know, they're small businesses and they don't have time to watch our meetings and come to our business retention meetings and weigh in. And I think it's really important that we get their input as well during this. So we just wanted to share that Nona and the chamber are willing to help us do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Forrest. Thank you for doing that work. So what I heard from council is consensus to reopen Arenas Road to traffic. Is that right? I heard a few votes for that. And then where are we on maintaining the lane reduction? I think I heard not to maintain the lane reduction, or that's what Councilmember Woods was saying in terms of the design standards or how that, how that falls.
Yeah, I think what I heard was either don't maintain it or come up with design standards that stop, that could avoid the problem where it sort of feels like a corridor, it's not active, it's blocking the retail. You know, we may need some parking available, you know, make them smaller so there's some parking available for the retail on that side. So just, that one needs more thought, is what I took away. Did you get enough, Lynn, from us to?
Yes, I think so. On the reopening of Arenas Road, in the staff report I suggested July 1st, that might be a little bit quick to do that in terms of the businesses who are utilizing that right-of-way. They may have contracts. What I might recommend is that we give ourselves about 30 to 45 days to reopen that in working with the business owners who would be impacted by that reopening. And then secondly, what I'm hearing is that we should survey the business owners relative to the lane reduction and come back to you with a recommendation on that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Flynn, I have a question. By the way, I should always have Flynn summarize instead of me doing it. But my question is, we got an email about ADA access and handicap parking. I think it's still the word we use for parking, parking for people with disabilities. So could you respond for the members of the public who are asking about ADA access or access to handicap parking?
So I don't know how many on-street handicap spaces we may have. What we always try to do is preserve those handicap spaces and make them available where we need to do so. So working with the engineering division, we'll continue to make sure that we maintain the handicap spaces and make those available to members of the public who use them.
Thank you, that'd be great.
So let me go on to the next topic, and that is relative to on-street parking and parking restrictions. One of the comments that we've had is that, obviously, with the use of parklets, that has reduced the number of on-street parking spaces. What I would recommend to you is that we might be able to gain additional on-street spaces through looking at efficiencies of our existing parking. The other thing that we need to do, we've had a lot of input on this from business owners relative to the time restrictions that we have on the on-street parking spaces. What I'd like to do is come back to you, probably in September, with a plan for additional on-street parking spaces and then also a plan for modification to the time limits on the on-street parking. So that way, we can address some of the parking concerns. We have also been working on the creation of a signage program and a wayfinding program for the public parking lots in the downtown area. We would also like to bring that back to you at approximately the same time. So that would be our recommendation to you, is to work on those things and then bring a program back to you. So, Madam Mayor, I turn that over to you.
Thank you. Comments on those items? I see heads nodding yes in agreement to staff recommendation. Is that right? Yes, you have five heads nodding yes.
That was an easy one, thank you. Let's go on to the next one. This is one that Mayor Protem brought up earlier and has been brought up in public comment, relative to establishing a fee for parklet use. What staff would recommend is that we adopt a monthly fee for the parklet based on market rates and based on the actual square footage that is occupied by the parklet. As we may look at a long-term program for public-use parklets where they are exclusively just for public use, we would consider waiving that fee and, because again, it would be for public benefit. But for the commercial use, we'd recommend establishing a fee. And so with that, I'd like to get your input on the proposal for a fee.
Thank you, Councilmember Forrest.
Yeah, I agree that we, we should have a fee. I would suggest that we have some provision authorizing waiver if restaurants have reduced capacity again. But during the time they're 100% open for their regular capacity, I think we should, the fee is appropriate. And I think we've heard from a lot of the businesses that they think there should be a fee, including a lot of the restaurants with parklets. So I, I think it's a good idea and I think it will, to Mayor Protem's point. We won't have businesses agree to have them and not use them, right? Because they're thinking they'll get to use them a couple, once a week, if they have to pay a fee, right? So, and I know Councilmember Woods had raised, ways you know other cities have done it at one of our meetings, so, not to put you on the spot, but I don't remember what you said, so. But I remember you said you had some experience on this when we met with some of the restaurants.
Yeah, basically, you know, you want to char, you want to basically charge for use of public right-of-way as if you were renting the building because you're giving them that kind of space and allowing them to expand. So I think the recommendation from staff falls right in line with what is kind of best operating practices out there.
Thank you. So does anyone disagree with staff recommendation? So you have consensus with your recommendation, Flynn?
Terrific, thank you. Moving on to the topic of outdoor dining. I've covered all of the bullet points relative to the parklets and appreciate the direction of council that you've given me. With that, let me just discuss briefly outdoor dining. As I had mentioned, outdoor dining is already covered under our zoning code. We allowed that prior to the pandemic and will continue to allow that. We did see an expansion of outdoor dining during the pandemic, obviously, to address the restrictions on indoor uses. But my recommendation is that we continue to allow outdoor dining in accordance with our zoning code. There are issues where we have waived certain zoning requirements to allow outdoor dining. So for example, we have allowed restaurants and the bars that serve food to set up dining spaces in private parking lots where required parking is provided for businesses. So that's an instance where we will probably need to go back to open up those parking lots, to make those parking spaces available. What I would recommend that we do is that we have a period of approximately three months to allow those businesses to phase out the dining in their required private parking lots so that they can begin to end contracts with any providers of the equipment or the tables and things like that that they've been doing. You have had public testimony suggesting that we should extend that period for longer than three months. One, I believe, suggested six months would be more appropriate. I, I think that's a decision that's really up to the city council. We have found that it has certainly helped the businesses to work with the restrictions that have been in place. But if those restrictions are listed, lifted, then we can go back to normal operations. So what I'd like to get direction from council on is the time period to remove the outdoor dining that is located in parking spaces. With that, Madam Mayor, I'd turn that back to you.
Thank you. Flynn, if I can, so can you give examples of non-conforming outdoor dining that was approved during the pandemic that might have to be removed?
Exactly, that's the dining that is in parking spaces or dining where we haven't required the provision of additional parking spaces based on the number of seats.
I see, because of the parking requirements that we have per restaurant.
Exactly.
So, for example, Sandfish, which built a beautiful, beautiful sort of elevated, I almost want to say deck, sort of for the restaurant for outdoor dining. That would be an example of non-conforming outdoor dining?
Correct, because it's-
Or something like that. I'm going to put any business on the spot.
Correct, because that's located in a required parking space and so they would need to remove that. And so the question becomes, how long should we give them in order to amortize that cost that they've expended in terms of those dining spaces?
Did you consider a process at all to consider allowing any of them?
At the direction of council, we certainly could do that. We could establish a process to keep those. But I would want direction from council in terms of how long you would want to extend that, whether that be on a permanent basis or is it 12 months, 18 months? I would look for some direction from council on that.
Thank you, Flynn. Councilmember Forrest, and then Councilmember Wood.
Great, thank you, Mayor. You know, I was thinking, this conversation changed my thinking a little bit, but I wanted to raise the other points I had been thinking about as we discussed this, which is, you know, I think if you have a business that can't use their space in front, right? We know we have some, that it's a red zone, right? I think of Zen, right? On Palm Canyon, being more flexible and allowing them to use spots in a parking lot, right? Because they don't have another option, right? If we allow people to use the private parking lot and the parking spots in front, then it's sort of like two corner, a corner business, right? So I think we should be somewhat flexible for pla, if there are parking lot spaces when it's a red zone in front or they don't, otherwise can't be in front, right? You think about some of the businesses on the curve on South Palm Canyon we talked about, or East Palm Canyon, whatever that is over there. You know, if they don't use their parking lot, there, there is no way because we don't want people sitting in front, there are no parking spots. So I'd like to, that's what I'd like to see, flexibility. One thing we heard from some businesses on Arenas is, given there's diagonal parking, if they're using the same number of spots in the parking lot and give up their spots on the street, let them pick which one works best for them. Could be a possibility as well. So I just want to raise those as options as we move forward on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood.
So I'm just, it was a question for staff and since Sandfish was brought up and it appears they've made a bit of an investment into their outdoor dining in their parking lot, would they not have the option to find parking elsewhere for, you know, for the business?
Yes, potentially, they could. There is that allowance in our zoning code that does allow off-site parking. We've done agreements with other businesses where, for example, one business uses their parking lot during the day. A restaurant might enter into an agreement to use their parking spaces at night. So certainly, our zoning code allows that and we could consider that as an option for businesses such as that.
And allowing, just to, Councilmember Forrest, I don't know how we're really flexible, that, I'm not sure how that really happened without being fair. But, you know, really, the idea of parklets is to liven the street, not to put them in back alleys or back parking lots. So I, you know, I, I'm, I can't say that I'm so much in support of, of doing, doing that. I mean, we, the gay community, I can tell you, I've worked very, very hard to bring us out of the back alley and into the forefront of windows in the street when we used to have to enter through the back alley. And I just really don't want to revert back to that, I guess. So maybe that's a personal bias that I have. But we've come a long way to be able to have, you know, to be able to not get eggs thrown at you or you get shot by being, sitting in the front of a business. And I, I think that's the whole idea that we're talking about here, is liven the street and make it kind of, kind of lively. So I just don't, don't, I'd have to be convinced to use a back parking lot that would do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Woods. And I think to Councilmember Forrest's point, it sort of depends on where the parking is. So for example, for Sandfish, not to keep using them, but that is sort of pedestrian, the sidewalk adjacent. So it actually does liven the pedestrian experience and the sidewalk. It improves that area where it was a crappy parking lot that was always hard to park in anyway because there are like six spots there. It really is an improvement to what was there before. So I understand that they need to be parked adequately, but, but I agree with you, it's sort of, is it a back alley where it isn't improving that experience versus it is part of the street skate? And, you know, it is a side parking lot or, you know, adjacent to the street like a parklet. So I don't know how we, how we define that. But, but I agree with your comments in general. Other comments? Mayor Protem.
Thank you. And, and Councilmember Woods makes a good point. But I, I do know that we have some places where businesses have opened up to, to the back because it just wasn't pragmatic to be able to go to the front and actually made it a very positive scene for their particular business. So I'd like to allow some flexibility for businesses to work with the staff to create solutions that work for each individual business.
See, Councilmember Garner nodding yes and thumbs up thing. So to Flynn, do you have a summary of direction that might assist us here?
What I'm hearing is to allow a certain degree of flexibility in terms of the outdoor dining where located in parking lots, taking into consideration the opportunities the business has for the use of a parklet. One of the questions I'm still unsure about is in terms of phasing out some of the dining and parking lots where they do have the option to have a parklet or where they're taking up existing parking spaces. Wasn't really clear in terms of how you wanted to phase those out in terms of the timeframe.
Thank you, that's right. Any direction about timeframe? Councilmember Wood.
My observation is that a lot of those businesses are bars. And it may be bars that serve food versus restaurants. And the question comes, really, it's a question we might not know until the 15th of, are bars going to be able to continue without serving food into the public realm or outside of their business? So I, you know, besides Sandfish, which I think is a great example, I'm a little unclear of providing direction at this point.
There's such a varied list. So it could be Manhattan, which has a large, large restaurant and has built, you know, kind of more temporary things outside versus Sandfish, which is more permanent. So I agree, it's hard to talk about it and, without a lot of examples and detail. So I personally support extending much longer than three months. I don't know if it's six months and then we review. It, it depends if we want to have design standards and sort of consider these more like parklets. Obviously, we don't need or want the very, very temporary ones to continue. And maybe those will be phased out as no longer a business necessity when they are temporary. But I would propose six months with a process to review if any can become conforming or, you know, can meet design guidelines to be able to be made, considered a parklet or something similar.
Okay, that is helpful.
Councilmember Forrest.
So are you thinking, and I was going to suggest six months, so I'm good with that. But would they also be allowed to use both the private parking lot and the street parking? I would say not both because that really impacts the parking for retail, right? If you're letting them take the parking lot and, you know, sometimes retail was usually, you know, people would park there for the retail and the parking in front, doesn't seem fair, is sort of what we're doing on corners. I would think it's one or the other.
I agree with your proposal, sorting, sort of making it fair to parklets and treating that like a corner space. I think that was a good proposal. Other comment? Councilmember Wood.
I just want to be careful in how we do it. If you look at Manhattan's in the desert or you look at Elmer's- If you look at Manhattan's in the desert, or you look at Elmer's or anything of that nature, we would be giving them an enormous amount of outdoor space, right? That they may or may not want when it comes summertime. And they may not be able to, you know, do we populate it the same way that we're doing parklets with, you know, two meals a day? Or are they empty? But we're giving them an enormous amount of excess space. And if it's on their private property like Elmer's is, without providing the parking. Because Elmer's couldn't, when they did the, the outdoor space, they couldn't use the indoor space. So it was, you know, there was one or the other. Now we're kind of, we're allowing them to maybe double their space without providing parking. Um, and, um, and how do we do that effectively? I'm not, I'm not clear on something like that. I, I'm just using specific examples to help us understand the totality of what we're trying to deal with. And I, my assumption is that some of these businesses will not want to continue outdoors. Um, they, they probably will, you know, contract to bring it back indoors, especially with the summer months, because the infrastructure to continue outdoors during the summer months may be too costly for them. And then there's the bars, like you look at Arenas, there's the bars and we just don't know what's going to really happen with the bars. If they're going to be, have to be classified as restaurants when they get their catering permit, or if they go back to bars. We don't know the answer to that yet. So, um, that, that's, that's my two cents.
So I know the city attorney, um, is trying to reach ABC and is continuing to do that, so we'll probably get that information. Um, but if we can ask him a question. So currently are bars allowed to be using the public right of way and not serving food? Or are those rules still in place?
Those rules are, those rules are still in place. Uh, if they're, if they are operating outdoors, uh, they can, yes, I believe. Again, we're, we're seeking clarification from ABC on this, this issue.
Okay, but you think they do have to be serving food?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure they, they're thinking that or, because that's not happening. So at least with some, and it just raises the whole issue. We want to be able, whatever we do, we need it not to be overburdened on staff and enforceable because, you know, there are restaurants now on the sidewalk serving, you know, alcohol that's not within their control, right? It's not controlled at all. Um, we're just seeing, you know, we very understandably lack some signage. A-frames are back in the middle, right, of the street blocking ADA access. Just, we just have to figure out how to do this so we're not overburdening staff and we're getting people to really be conscious of those rules and especially the ADA rules. Um, and, you know, maybe as we look at this, look at enforcement where, you know, if you've gotten a warning twice, you lose your right to have the A-frame or to have tables on the sidewalk. Um, because we don't want our code enforcement having to do everyday visits, right? So I just, something just to think about is for staff, is how we do this in a way, uh, you know, that works without overburdening our code enforcement, but making sure our ADA and other things are really taken seriously by the businesses. Thank you, Mayor.
So Flynn, we've been at this for a while and I think we're waiting in terms of being able to give you real, you know, um, really specific direction on this. So do you have enough to work with staff to make an effective program?
Yes, I, I think I can. Based on what we've discussed this evening, there's a number of issues that we need to come back to council with in terms of finalizing some of the details of the extension of the existing parklets. What I would recommend that we do, just looking at the fact that we will need to do some outreach to businesses, we will need to work with stakeholders and our architectural review committee to come up with design standards that we can implement for the existing parklets, uh, as well as some of the issues relative to creating additional on-street parking spaces. What I'd recommend is that we come back to you in about 60 days, um, with some recommendations in terms of how we move forward for the next 12 months for the existing parklets. Uh, so that gives us some time to finalize these details, uh, and come back to you. Uh, there are other issues that we can address right away in terms of the opening of Arenas, uh, based on the timeframe that we had discussed earlier and, and some of the other minor details that we can work out. But what I'd like to do is come back to you, uh, once we've had a chance to work with stakeholders, survey businesses and then finalize these details. Does that seem reasonable, Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So with that, I have the direction of council. I appreciate your discussion and your input this evening and we're going to get right to work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Flynn, to you and your team for excellent work, as always. I see that Councilmember Woods has his hand raised.
Wanted to add a couple of other things. Um, you talked about ADA parking. I really think that we, when we come up with the design standards, ADA access, uh, is going to be very important and to have that fully considered, uh, in, in the access. And the last thing is, in some of the cases, the restaurants have their hostess stands either in the public right of way or right adjacent to the public right of way, causing some problems. And the hostess stands, I think, need to be on their property, kind of in their property a little bit versus causing congestion on the public right of way. Um, uh, those are just a couple of last comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item is city council and city manager request an upcoming agenda development. First, I'll go to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We've provided you a tentative upcoming meeting schedule. As you can see, we have a relatively full agenda for the June 24th meeting and things lighten up quite a bit in July before we go dark. So I'm optimistic that we can get to a couple of our future items that have been, um, kind of on a list for a little while. So if you have strong feelings about some items we might identify for a July meeting, you could provide those comments now or as we, um, have the June 24th meeting. One of those I'll certainly want to have is just to at least talk conceptually about a strategic visioning, uh, both a general timeframe and, and an approach. Want to make sure that you have lots of lead time on that so that we have valuable inputs for you by the time we have that. So I'd probably try to work that in, in July as well. With that, I can take questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? I don't see any. Do any council members have comments? Seeing none, um, Councilmember Corr is going to adjourn the meeting tonight.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, want to adjourn, um, meeting in memory of Jeffrey Sankar, um, who was a Palm Springs resident and, uh, for 30 years produced the White Party, which over those decades brought hundreds of thousands of people to Palm Springs. Many who came here for a white party ended up buying houses, um, in Palm Springs and brought really for that period of time, um, especially when it started, superstar entertainment, uh, to Palm Springs. Um, and just a very successful event, uh, and just wanted to, you know, remember him and the many positive things he did, uh, for our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn at 10:48. The next regular city council meeting will be held on June 24th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Night, everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Goodbye.